Pre-caucus caucus meeting of September 1st, 2020, Utica Common Council. Once everybody's seated. We'll start off with ordinance number 12. Approving the designation of Downtown Utica Development LLC as an eligible and qualified project sponsor pursuant to Article 15 of the general municipal law for the purpose of the sale of Kennedy Parking Garage. The sale would be in the amount of $1,500,000. Any questions, concerns? Anybody want to talk about anything with that?
Yes, I have a couple of questions on that.
Okay.
So, I'm going to ask you, Brian. So, obviously, I'm on the Urban Renewal Board. I'm all for this project. Just a couple of things that I'd like to run by you. And forgive me if I missed it during our presentation. I was kind of overwhelmed by their presentation. I thought it was excellent. I think it's a great project. But I just want to know, they're buying this for $1.5 million. And what was the amount? Did they give us an exact figure on the money that they're going to put in to repair this building? Was it, I know the city had $13 million, right?
The estimate for the city to do the work is $13 million.
Okay.
That assumes prevailing wage rates.
Okay.
Private sector entity could do it for cheaper.
Okay. And do they have the funding to do this?
Yes. They provided a letter from their bank stating that they...
They did. I wasn't sure, and I couldn't find my paperwork.
Correct.
So, we do have something in writing that says they have the funding right now to do this project.
They have the financial wherewithal, yes.
Okay. The other question I have is, I know it's in the middle of a pandemic, and we've gone through a lot of stuff, but they have three or four other projects going in the city right now, correct, that aren't finished? Can you give me a little story on the reason?
They have finished, they purchased the security building on Bleecker Street from the Urban Renewal Agency. They have finished that project. It's fully leased up to the Legal Aid Society.
Okay.
They also purchased the old GE building on the corner of Bleecker...
That's the one I'm talking...
That's underway currently. That's being worked on.
Okay.
Target for us?
They did.
Yes, they did.
Not through the agency because it's not within the Urban Renewal Agency boundaries, but from the city, yes.
Okay.
That's underway, and they have restored grant funds from the state and are working on that project. They also purchased the New Century Building on the corner of Genesee and Hopper.
Okay.
From us. And they purchased across the street the Kefbaup Building.
Okay.
Privately. Both are in the middle of being completed.
Okay.
Both are part of a DRI project. And all projects that were included in the DRI, we're told by state representatives during the DRI process, not to advance any work that you were expecting to be reimbursed for from the DRI. Because if you can proceed with the project on your own, then you don't need DRI funds. So, those projects have been on hold until the DRI monies were announced.
Okay. So, they...
Funding was announced for both of those properties, and they are currently working with Empire State Development to get them under a grant agreement. And then work will, I expect work will restart within the next month or two, I would say.
Okay. And, okay, you have that.
Can I follow up on that?
Yeah, I got one...
Let her finish, and then you can have the floor.
The other thing, tell me, we never talked about this, the hotel, until the presentation that day. And I tell you, the hotel, the idea of that, that really sold me. But then after that, there's been a ton of questions about this airspace and all that there. And then, is the company, is it Bowers is the company, right?
It's a joint application between Bowers Development out of Syracuse and Pike.
Pike, okay. Now, are they going to be building this hotel? Or are we going to be, is a different entrepreneur coming in to build the hotel?
I believe they're intending to build the hotel.
Build it and operate it themselves, or...
Not necessarily operate. They're not, they're not hotel operators.
Right.
But they could put that out for...
Okay. And so, they would have the time at any time to, obviously, they could resell this if they wanted to too, correct?
Well, under the urban renewal process, they would have to get a certificate of completion on the work that they're suggesting they're going to undertake before they could resell. Or they could resell with the approval of the Urban Renewal Agency.
Okay. So, last thing, and I won't, like I said, I think it's a great project. I just wanted to be sure of a couple of things before I voted on it. So, the airspace thing, can you give me anything on that?
The developer is fully aware of what they're purchasing. They walked through the property, the garage, prior to submitting the application to the Urban Renewal Agency, and they understand what the limits of the property that they're buying are.
Okay. So, what, can you explain to me in layman's terms what you mean? I mean, this airspace thing, what are they trying to say? What, the hospital is saying that they can't go to a certain level?
Basically, the air rights that they're purchasing that go with the garage are out here on the side parking lot, in between the two steel, what do you call it, barriers? There's a barrier on either side, and that's the airspace that they're purchasing. The garage underneath goes, is wider than that airspace on top.
And what is the, and the hospitals contending? What is the fight between them too?
I think the hospital wants to make sure that the developers are aware of where their property that they're purchasing starts and ends.
Okay. So, the property they're purchasing, as long as they stay within the boundaries of the property they're purchasing, they can go as high as they want?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, when you say as high as they want...
Well, I mean...
There's zoning requirements. I don't remember off the top of my head what the maximum is.
The hospital can, they have to follow the zoning of the city?
Yes.
Not where the hospital can come in and say, "You can't build there because you're in our airspace."
Correct.
Okay. All right. I have no more questions. Appreciate it. I think it's a great project, and thanks for answering my questions.
Sure. Councilperson friend, you have the floor.
Thank you. You were just speaking very quickly. Go back to the second project. So, the security building, that's all done. Legal Services is using it. New Century almost done, but kind of got slowed down by the DRI in perfectly reasonable ways. Go back to the middle project and talk to us more about that. Underway.
The GE building on Bleecker and Culver.
Right.
It's underway. It has a restore grant that this body authorized submission of.
Right.
I believe it's a $2 million grant.
Okay.
Through the state. They're, they've demolished a lot of the building.
Okay.
They chose to keep, it was selective demolition. They chose to keep certain portions of the building.
Okay.
And they're going to add on to those portions. And I believe most of the demolition is done.
Okay.
And they were just awaiting steel to begin the...
And steel has slowed down, right? I believe steel supply is really constricted at the moment. So, they're in pretty early stages of that, and pretty late stages, we would say, of the New Century Building.
Yeah, they've done a lot of work on the New Century Building already.
Right.
Once they purchased it, they stabilized the roof, stabilized the floors, the lower floors. It was on the verge of collapse, actually, at the time they purchased it.
Right.
And really, it's just ready for fit out now.
Okay. Okay. And then, so the question I have about the Kennedy Garage project is, so the project is both to fix the garage, maybe extend the garage up one story, and then build a hotel on top of that. Does the viability of that project for them, from their point of view, depend upon the hotel? And what I'm wondering is, if they were to decide a year from now, "Ooh, look at the occupancy rate of all the hotels we already have. We can't justify building a hotel," does that undermine the viability of the restoring the parking garage? Are those sort of separate projects that have like sort of separate financial viabilities? Or if they decide that they, that building a hotel is a money pit that they're not going to recover from, are they still going to build the garage? Are they going to, do you know what I'm...
I believe they still intend to move ahead with the rehabilitation of the garage. However, given the proximity to the hospital, they believe that a hotel is a win.
Right. No, I understand that they, I mean, obviously, they believe that. I'm a little skeptical of that. So, what I want to know is, if I'm right and they're wrong about the need for another hotel this close, in downtown Utica like this, what I want to know is, is it going to undermine their garage project?
I believe they're still intending to move forward with the garage rehabilitation.
Even if they change their mind about the hotel? Okay. All right. That's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williamson, you have the floor.
Hey, Brian. Now, with the situation we had on Sunset Ave, they built it up higher than people liked to be held in the center. The same concept, I mean, is it permitted? Are they going to be permitted to go above a certain level? I mean, did we put those parameters in there because there is all kinds of things going on around the airspace?
Well, keep in mind, you're not exactly comparing apples to apples. The Kellerman Center is in a residential neighborhood.
I'm just using for an example. I mean, they went up higher, and people didn't like, what I'm getting at is...
This is in downtown, which allows for higher buildings. Offhand, I don't know, I don't know the height limit for buildings in downtown, but I believe it's fairly generous, given heights of other buildings in the downtown.
That close to the hospital where it's going to become a show or a problem? You know, you're not seeing where I'm getting at, where it became a problem with the height of the Kellerman Center. All right? We, the city gave them a permit to go up four or five stories, whatever the case may be. Is the city going to give them a permit to go up 10 stories if they want to? You know, the hospital is going to...
With the hotel?
With the hotel, I mean.
As long as it meets zoning, yes.
Okay. All right.
Councilman DeBrango, you have the floor.
Just one question, Brian. I know we use parking spaces in that Kennedy Garage, right, underneath?
The city?
The city, yes.
The city does use...
Will that be taken away? Or are we still making a deal where we could still use the parking?
There's different alternatives that the mayor is looking at to address that parking. It's not, it's not a lot of spaces between the city and the Water Authority. There's other parking available in the area, or we could work with the new owner and negotiate.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we have enough parking for our members that work in City Hall.
The mayor's aware of that.
Negotiate after you sell it? Frankie, you're going to lose your parking spot tonight.
All right.
I have a question.
Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Negotiate after you sell it? I mean, there's still room there after we go on this tonight?
Yeah.
Can you explain that? I'm not...
I understand you have negotiated since the last after we sell it. So, yeah, I'm with you.
When it becomes...
Anybody that wants to park in the parking garage is going to have to lease parking spaces from the owner.
Right. But how do...
The city either pays what they're asking, or we find alternatives. And there are alternatives in the area.
We have that there, leasing after we sell the building?
Just like any other business works.
They keep saying that they want the building, we would negotiate.
I think what he's trying to say is the same thing with the parking garage behind the rest. It's their prerogative, once they own it, who they want to lease the parking spaces to. So, at that point, they would negotiate that. And if that is not possible, we would explore other avenues. So, there's other places where we could park those vehicles that were parked in that garage.
I guess I'm asking because it seems like you would have more leverage prior to the sale than after the sale.
I do just want to support, sure. I do just want to, to support Councilman Moody's point. We can enter into any kind of fair, reasonable negotiation with them, and they can say, "We don't want city..." I mean, it's going to be a private transaction. There's no guarantee that we will continue to have parking in that garage. They can charge us what they want. They can charge us more than we want to pay. It'll just be like any other private transaction between two private individuals, right? We don't have any actual leverage to say, once we've sold the building, we don't have the leverage to say, "Hey, we insist on these 20 spots for our people," right? Correct?
We didn't sign a contract yet. We could maybe put a little amendment in there.
The mayor's working on parking.
At the...
And there's other spaces around the building.
Yeah, I don't park there. So, I mean, I'm not, but I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm not as concerned in that sense. I know that there are. And I actually, I'm not a big parking, like, I don't know, parking, it just isn't the most important thing to me. But I do, just on the principle of it, the idea that we're still negotiating something with somebody, I mean, this is Councilman Moody's part, Councilman DeBrango's point. Once we've sold it to them, we're not negotiating that. We'll buy it from them, or we won't buy it from them. We'll rent it from them, or we won't rent it from them. We won't have any leverage left.
Councilman Beatrice, you have the floor.
Why wouldn't somebody want to sell parking spaces if they have them?
So, the one thing that I'll tell you, I was on the board with Brian when they did the presentation, and obviously, talk is, you know, it wasn't nothing in writing, but they did, when the question, when I asked the question about the parking, they did say that they will come up with something. Obviously, we would have to put it in there, but they did say that we could get the parking spots from them.
And I believe Brian said they were working on that. The mayor was working on it.
Between the city and the Water Authority, I think there's 80 spaces at most that are used in that garage.
Right.
Out of a garage that has close to 500 spaces, I believe.
So, to Councilman DeBrango's point, obviously, there's a sale. We need to put a clause in there that we want to park in or come up with it, I would think.
If I can, to me...
Of course.
To me, I would have, you know, I mean, we're here now. But I just think about, you know, when we say, "Well, there's still things to be negotiated," I think about the aspect of leverage. That's the first thing that comes to my mind. But the second thing is, you know, how do we ensure that five years down the road, somebody's not charging $15 an hour, you know, for parking, or $20 an hour? You know what I mean? How, we, how the city could not care about those things, but it's just a question, how do we navigate that? You know, was there any discussion there? I wasn't in the Urban Renewal meetings or whatever, but I just had those types of questions. Were there, were there any type of discussion? Or was it just looking at the building, saying, "This is how much it costs. This is how much you want to get it for," without any consideration of, not programmatic aspect of it, but how did that implement in terms of parking? Has the city had those conversations? Has there been any discussion about what it flushes out with, with the consti constituents?
The mayor's aware that there's a parking need once this property is sold. But whether it, whether that need is resolved by parking in that garage and paying the owner what they ask for, or whether it's, can be accommodated on existing public lots around the City Hall, hasn't yet been determined. And I don't think it's an issue that should derail the proposal. I think it's an issue that can be pretty easily handled.
Maybe I'm outside my lane, but aren't we going to get more parking spaces at the old Radisson Garage once this is sold and once this is repaired? You'll pick up, you'll pick up more than the 80s spaces that you...
Right. But the one and a half million is going into the additional repairs to that facility, which will open up additional parking. Correct.
Yes.
That's city parking.
Correct.
Okay. Moving on. Ordinance number 14. The sale of 125 Thomas Street in the amount of $8,000 to Seraphin Vezquez Martinez. Any issues? Next is resolution number one, calling for the public hearing on the sale of 124 Thomas Street in the amount of $30,000 to Patricia Muello. The next is calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1, or 315 to 317 Court Street in the amount of $400,000 to Michael Pezzelenella.
I'm going to be a no on this public hearing. I just think it's too early. I think we're getting too little. I think we haven't adequately advertised this. I just think that there are lots of open questions, and we shouldn't do the public hearing yet.
Okay. Next is resolution number five, calling for the public hearing on 1,125 Summit Place in the amount of $1,500 to Soco Two LLC. Next would be resolution number seven, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 707, 709, 319.53-4-39 Mohawk Street, and 703, 705, 707, 711 Blandina Street in the amount of $7,000 to Esmer Servamith Vik. Any questions on that one? Next is resolution number nine, authorizing the sale of wine and beer to St. Next is resolution number nine, authorizing the sale of wine and beer to St. Anthony-St. Agnes Church. This is for an event that would be St. Cosmos-St. Damien Annual Feast, Saturday, September 25th, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Yes.
I know. Next is for Councilmember Miola. Ordinance number 10, intersections where stop required. Ordain that section 2-16-358 Schedule C intersection where stop required. Be amended to include the following: Lead Street and Eagle Street Northeast corner, Lead Street, Eagle Street Southwest corner.
So many legislative actions, there's the signs already there, so...
This is from your study, from your survey.
Clean up.
Excellent. Excellent.
Next is resolution number 11, approving shared services agreement with the County of Oneida and neighboring municipalities.
That's normal. Do this every...
Next is resolution number 12, authorizing an engineering planning grant for combined sewer overflow and abatement study.
Give you some information about that, is that okay?
Very tight.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Do you want to talk on the mic back there?
Have a server to take it.
Oh, we're sorry.
Thank you guys for coming, too.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, anytime, yes, yes. So this is, um, this is a study...
So if you could really quickly, just because there are people watching, just introduce yourself so they know who you are and where you're from.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm Paul Ramallo, Ranball Engineering. We're a consultant engineer that works quite frequently with the Utica Engineering Department, and we're consulting the city on the city's combined sewer overflow control program.
Stephanie Wears from the Assistant Engineering, in the Engineering Office for the city.
So, uh, this study that is being proposed by the Engineering Department is a study for, to complete a project on the city's long-term control plan list. It's a, it's a plan that the city has for a number of projects that reduce the amount of combined sewer overflow that goes into the creeks and the Mohawk River during rain events. And so, the city's completed several of these projects, and most of these projects are taking and splitting up storm water from San Turi sewage. A lot of the city, the city sewage and the city storm water flow flows in the same pipes, and that causes a problem when it rains because those pipes get overloaded, and then they overflow to the river into the water bodies. So, the Engineering Department, and over the years, led by Debbie Day and Stephanie Hare Wors, is now very involved, and been doing projects, separation projects to, one by one, to reduce the amount of overflow that is going into the rivers. In advance of one of these projects, we often do, you know, a study, and some, and often for, the study helps us take the project to next level design, and it gets it closer to being fully designed and going into construction phase. So this, this, we got a, the city applied for a grant for the study for, this is called the CSO Control Project A9.8, I'm sorry, A6, and that's in the Lincoln Ave area. So we're studying, separating 48 acres of storm and sewer in that area. So this, 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 the study will look at that and bring that from conceptual phase to preliminary engineering. It's also going to look at, it's also going to look at Nail Creek in that area. As you know, Nail Creek, it's, um, it's a conduit under the city. When you separate the storm water in this area, you're going to bring the storm water to Nail Creek. Obviously, Nail Creek has had some capacity issues. You've seen Arterio that has flooded over in that area, and has, has some capacity challenges. So before this project can be done in this area for separation, Nail Creek has to be looked at. So this study also looks at Nail Creek. It's going to, it's looking at a couple areas of Nail Creek where there might be a bottleneck, potentially, say, under the Arterio, there could be a bottleneck, there could be a bottleneck further on from that. The study needs to look at those, but those sources where the Nail Creek capacity might need to be increased. It will also look at options to, maybe look at storage options to make, to allow for the rate event happens, Nail Creek, Nail Creek needs storage for the rate event to pass and then release. So if you're looking at those kind of options as well, and there'd be underground storage to be built to help the situation. So, so it's kind of a two-fold study. So, what we have here, and I'll, I'll take any questions, but it's a $60,000 study, and the state through the Environmental Facilities Corporation will be doing a $50,000 grant for this. This was awarded to the city in the last round of CFAs, and then it'll be a $10,000 match. And five of that $10,000 will be in-kind services performed by the Engineering Department, and Stephanie and staff will be working on the study as well. So, yep.
I, I see. You didn't read the next line. It says, "Mayor Robert M. Palmeri may increase this local match with in-kind services without further approval from the common council." Do you anticipate it being hundreds of thousands? I mean, I know it's...
No, no, it would be, what that means is we, we're, the city's planning on doing 5,000 in in-kind services. If the, if the city can do 10,000 in kind, in-kind services, doesn't cost anything.
Right, but will it exceed over 10? Do you, in your expert opinion?
No. The reason why we've kept, the reason why we're projecting five is very difficult without, for the city staff to do that much work on the study to get to that $5,000 level. There's a certain amount of hours that have to be contributed, so we're just being realistic. If, if the city Engineering Department can do more than 5,000, that, that, that language allows, perhaps, a more advanced, we can go.
Okay.
Yeah. Last line.
It's 10,000 total in monies, whether that be our hours that get applied or money.
Right.
So it's 10,000 total. You subtract any of our hours, the remaining balance is what the city would cover.
Because one of the bottlenecks is the Arterio, Stephanie and Paul. Are we working with the state, and with this study as too? Are they joining us on this study? Have they agreed to?
They will definitely be a partner. I mean, they're not performing the analysis or the calculations, but the state...
I mean, they recognize the issue that we have over there.
Oh, yeah. And I, I think even they might have put a support letter for this, but they're very aware of the study, and in support of it, will be talking to their, their engineers, and they'll be giving us information we need to do the calculations and do the high-level studies.
And, and the water collection area that you're talking about, would that be on, what side of the Arterio would that be on?
Well, the main concern, as far as the flooding, has been kind of on the east side of the Arterio, you know, where, where drinks...
Where about Lincoln Ave and that area over there, right?
And this project is, the control project won't be undertaken unless we can understand better which avenue to go in.
Right, right. But how would you create a water collection point when it's, it's all residential there?
It's going to be underground.
Right, underground, but you'd have to rip out, would you have to take down buildings and things of that nature?
We'd have to look forward...
I mean, we're talking about an urban renewal type of project in the event.
Well, we don't want, it's a study, so we don't want to skip ahead. You know, first, we're going to see if there's a, is there a bottleneck issue in the piping, you know, that needs to be addressed versus, you know, or is it just simply, we don't have the capacity to build and store it? If we have to go underground, then we'll look at those things, you know, if we have vacant lots that we can utilize, you know, can we, can we build underground and put some, you know, that build on top of it, you know? You know, we're going to look, there's a lot of different options. It might be, we also might be able to look at options upstream, to build some storage and some benches into Nail Creek where it's daylight, where it's not underground, to slow the water down upstream. So there's, there's more options than just, you know, I didn't mention a couple, but we'll be looking at all those options.
I'm, I'm, I just don't want a year from now, we're going to have to tell some of the people in the city of Utica that they're going to have to move out of their residence because we're going to have to build an underground system under where their house belongs, and then, you know what I mean? That'll, that'll turn into a real issue for the council, and for the city, and for the administration as well. So in the event we have to do something like that, I just, you know, we need to get way ahead of it, and, and, you know, because we did, when they put the new road in over there, they did take some houses out. So I just, and there were some issues with that, and so...
Right. And, and, so they agree, and I, you know, the first alternative we can look at, if storage is needed, it would be in right-of-way areas that are vacant properties and...
Right.
But that would all be investigated.
All right, thanks, Paul.
So is this report also going to cover things like infiltration, pervious versus impervious surfaces? And how much, sort of, how much can we get ahead of this simply by increasing those things? Decreasing pervious, increasing, you, you know what I'm saying, right?
Yes. So, the CSO, the separation projects that are done these days are never just, just the separation project. The state mandates that we do grid infrastructure component, so it just, Stephanie's working on a project right now, it's A9.2.
Yeah, two summers ago, we put the storm system along Riskey Boulevard, and to follow that was the A9.2, which is on Genesee Street, the Green Garden, and all of that along bike, trees, and all of that, too.
And would this also include the possibility of some retaining? You were saying up street, where Nail Creek is still daylight, which is like up in between the cemeteries, right, on the other side of Oneida? Now, of course, that's not Utica. Very quickly, you get out of Utica. Are we talking about retaining ponds up there as well?
It could be, you know, again...
But that's how it is now.
That's how it is, but it is kind of, yes. So, but yeah, I mean, we would look at the global picture to see if, you know, if that would be an option, you know?
Okay, thank you. And then just a very general question. How far along are we in terms of meeting federal standards about separating out storm and sewer?
The state, well, as far as capture goes, and this is attributed to Engineering Department, the state, the city has met its requirements, the amount of capture according to EPA guidelines.
Okay.
So it's captured 85 percent. And that means 85 percent of the total volume of the sewer is getting to the plant in an annual year. That's EPA standards. The city has gone over and above and done additional projects under the long-term control plan because the Engineering Department, they also have to meet a water quality standard at the end of this. If the city doesn't meet the water quality standards, they have to continue to do more projects. So, Engineering Department, with that being with Stephanie, there's, there's been at least two additional projects above and beyond the Speedy's, the Speedy's permit and the requirements of D E C to, to make sure the water quality is, is, meets the standards in the...
Right. So our problem at the moment is not that we're not capturing enough of this water, it's that enough of the water that isn't getting captured and getting dumped into the Mohawk isn't what we would like it to be.
Well, right. I mean, every time, you know, every time there's a release, there's, you know, there's...
Bacteria.
I'm not saying...
Bacteria will do. We all know, right. We know what kind of bacteria it is.
And there's, you know, there's, there are certain levels of that, the state's standards. And we want to make sure that doesn't happen. And, and believe me, you know, a big change has happened over the last 10 years, 12 years that the city's been doing this work.
And then just one last really quick question. How long do you think this study will take?
This study, it'll be, it'll probably be about a year, I don't know, because there's a number of hurdles we've got to go through with the D E C, and a number of iterations and reviews and everything. And then at that point, you know, once that's done, then we can seek funding to actually implement it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Everyone good with questions?
Yep. And the resolution just approved, allows the mayor to sign the paperwork for the grant agreement, and also, a part of the resolution just confirms that the city is exempt from C G A's engineering.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yep. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to ordinance number 13. Councilmember Miola and DeBrango, no parking at all times rescinded. Ordain that section 2-16-360 Schedule E, no parking at all times on Broadway East Side from the intersection of Hannah Park Drive and Broadway Southbound to a .73 feet from the same intersection. Schoolcraft Road, both sides, between Sherman Center and Garden Road. Schoolcraft Road, both sides, 1600 block, be rescinded. I believe that's cleanup as well. Another one?
No, actually, that's changed.
Is that changed?
That's changed. We had some complaints on these streets, and the Department kind of left to take the steps to camp to the area, and they got a good resolution to stop the problem.
Thank you.
So, that's 13, 14, and 15.
Judge, you have the floor.
Come on, that, you know, there are few of those. Perhaps the west side is still private.
The west side is going to stay no parking.
You're going to have no parking on the west side, that is, all of these?
That's correct, Your Honor.
Now, let's go stay in those.
Yes, sir.
So we, we, we...
The only one we're changing is the east side.
We're going to have, uh, we're, uh, we're, uh, no parking on the east side.
Correct.
So you would, it's going to be no parking on the east side.
Yes, Your Honor.
Moving on. Ordinance number 14. Councilmember Miola, no parking during certain hours rescinded. Ordain that section 2-16-361 Schedule F, no parking during certain hours. Schoolcraft Road, 1600 to 1604, Monday through Saturday during school sessions. Schoolcraft Road, west side from Garden to Parkway during school session, be rescinded. Next is ordinance number 15. Councilmember Miola, no parking at all times. Ordain that section 2-16-360 Schedule E, no parking at all times, be amended to include the following: Schoolcraft Road, east side from Sherman Center to Parkway. Be it further ordained that proper signage be erected where necessary. Does anyone have anything that is in the committee of the whole that they'd like to take out and discuss that they plan on bringing out this evening?
Can Jack talk about that lighting, the barriers, or anybody, I guess, you had a plow issue or something?
We all love about the bats. We got all...
Was there any, has anybody got any issues about moving forward with that?
I'm just going to be a no vote on it.
You don't, so we're supposed to take responsibility from the state now?
But it's not legally required of us, right? This is just sort of a tradition that we stand on.
Oh.
I asked you this last time. You said it's not legally required.
Refer to the judge on that.
I would have to refer that to the judge on that one.
Judge, could you please respond to that question? Judge? Could you please respond to that question? Councilperson Friend is asking if this is a legal responsibility for us to act on the...
12, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Yes.
Are we required to take responsibility for lighting that the state installs without consulting on us about how and where to install it? Do we have to take legal responsibility for maintaining it?
Resolution 11, 12, and 13 in the committee of the whole.
We talked about the 14.
Yeah. The Bag Square Harbor Point, the ADA Improvement Project.
The contract with the state is... The contract with the state has a reasonable structure, but it's not, uh, it's not, uh, sued by the, by the, by the, the, the resolution. I think we can talk about that in, uh...
Take that.
The number, you know, if we had some person, not just the money, that was already paid.
The right, the right next to the road.
It was, 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 it
That'll fit a city plow through there. I've seen, I've seen tractor trailers go down that road. Well, that's the issue with this. If they hit those, because, you know, are we responsible for replacing them?
Yes.
It is. It is. One lane.
And we gotta clean sidewalk.
And it's also, we, we, the city are true. The way you put, you go, you, 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 all of that is how I did. You should have, you know, those operations, those. I can answer. The resolution.
Since he's talking, just, if it's a, to him.
I just have a very general question, Judge. If we're already under a contractual arrangement with the state whereby they install these lights and we maintain them, if that's already a contractual obligation we've undertaken, why would we have to pass a resolution saying that we'll do the thing that we're already legally obligated to do?
Because right, well, right now, they're maintaining them.
Yeah.
And once the project is complete, we take ownership. So, now it's our insurance, it's our maintenance.
Grant the mayor the authority to take that.
And we have to physically do that.
I don't think we should be granting the mayor until they, until they fix that issue.
Right. Okay.
No, but if we hit them.
Right. Ordinances. Jack, which, of these four, which is the one that is about those, the, what he was, you know, the decorative pieces?
Is it the thirty-six new light foundations? Is it what I think they are? Thirty-six new light trailway standards? I think that's what they are. There's about thirty-six from there, maybe. I don't know.
Eleven, seventeen.
A, B, C, D.
But they're, but they're right on the road.
No, I know. I understand your objection. I'm just asking right now, of these four resolutions, which is the one?
Sorry, Judge.
Just, just, he, yeah, he's, yeah, he needs to finish what he's talking about.
Can you use your microphone? I didn't even know that you were talking. Okay.
It doesn't sound it.
It doesn't sound it. That's the problem. That is the problem.
I'll speak louder.
Thank you.
You'll find that we have, this doesn't state the whole contract. All of them have memorializing requirements of it. And you always see that they say, my resolution. It's really never the word used, ordinance, day's resolution. These resolutions came down, the Corporation Council's office, pursuant to the language in the contract of our agreement to maintain, as it says in the paragraph here, it says that it is about the agreement. Now.
One second.
You better answer the, why the Corporation Council sent them down at this night. Maybe because the con, the, they didn't send it out until the contract was completed. As far as I know, the part we're talking about is overdone. But constructed, it has a little monument set, the lights, it has a walkway that goes to do, you walk all along, that way it, we do. And so, my belief, that's why they're there, because they have to wait until the contract is completed before the memorialize, the, the.
So, I have a question.
Mr. Giorgio's here.
I think it's a little.
They came from her office. And the company of her office, I see that the, sort of.
Don't you hit a spot?
Call it a little bit. They look, always look the same to me, in pursuit of the contract obligations, those obligations are known by the Corporation Council. I never questioned those, when they do it that in that manner. But if you need it for an explanation, as far as the way the thing was constructed, there's nothing you can do about it. They're not gonna change it. State, the earth, Mr. Science, they, I, it's there. I know, I went over there first, the last time we talked, when you brought it up. And I looked it over. And I realized what they did. They put decorative monuments to stop cars from coming to her. And they, they had to do something, as I had a barrier. It's decorative. The lights are there. You and I know that a small problem has to go, that road can't be more than a big one. Right? Say a bit more about the policy again?
You could put a tractor trailer through there.
I'm sure the city, you, it's fully American, and you follow, follow it, something, I don't know, in the, in the, and that's why, that's why. Now, Mr. Giorgio, say a bit more about these.
Thank you, Judge. So, I just have one question for you. Is there time constraints since the project has finished that we do have to complete voting on this?
That I'm not sure about, that I'd have to look.
I'd like to see the engineer department come, from New York State, come down and explain why they put them there and why they're so close to the, to the road and why we should be responsible for.
Could you find that out for me regarding that so that we can see exactly what we need?
I thought we'd get a statement, council, councilman, because I doubt that they're gonna come down from the state. But I think we can get a statement and give you some kind of rationale why they put that there.
We could, we could have the clerk email Jimmy Pacola.
Perfect.
And he does, he definitely would come down to discuss.
Okay. Councilperson Friend?
I don't wanna put him on the spot, but he does this all the time.
Corporate counsel, you have the floor.
No, and I was just gonna say, I didn't prepare this piece of legislation, but I think as the judge had said, these are a lot of times standard.
It looks standard. I'm just wondering if, if there's like, we wanna be able to fulfill our end. We wanna make sure we're not in default.
I just, my concern is simply that we're taking on a responsibility to maintain something that we have good reason to predict, as Councilman LaMedico has pointed out, are gonna get wrecked really quickly. And then I just think it's fiscally irresponsible to the, to the taxpayers to take responsibility for something that we didn't get to decide how to place. So, I'd be very happy if we could keep this in committee and get more input from state engineers, et cetera.
I just want more comment, but, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Judge.
You have already, unless I'm confused, you correctly assumed the lighting system of the city of Utica in previous legislation. Done the whole lighting system for the whole city. So, I recall, you did that with an agreement with the state power authority and national grid. You're taking over the whole lighting system for the whole city of Utica. And it's, so, I don't think that tiny little bridge between those two areas is, can't be less than a quarter mile or half a mile long, makes any difference, because you're gonna maintain the whole city of Utica's lighting system on the new agreement you made to the New York State Power Authority. And you still have that now. And that's very important. When you assume that responsibility, you also make it more, less difficult. But that camera situation, that councilman Moody just talked about, that, I think, he just, all of him talked about the cameras, because we're gonna own the whole lighting system.
Judge, it's not really a lighting system. It's just for the people walking or, those are a little, those are not, those are not, those are right. It's not in the same.
The monuments, the, the, the design goes through years.
Councilperson Moody, you have the floor next.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. The problem is not this, not the wording of the legislation, but it, but the timing of it. It says, provided that the municipality and the city of Utica agrees to maintain, right? And then it says, be it further resolved, that the common council and the municipality hereby authorizes the mayor to enter into and execute in such agreement. So, the question is, why are we receiving this now as opposed to when the plan happens? So, 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 and it seems like the Corporation Council oftentimes, and even we had this issue in the past, where we get these resolutions off of already planned and executed aspects, and we're expected to almost rubber stamp something that has already happened. So, why wasn't this submitted to the council when the plan was submitted? Because technically, according to this resolution, he didn't have the authority to do it, because we didn't execute him, to give him the authority to execute such plan, per this resolution.
Contracts is an executive function, uh, uh, the.
But then maybe we need to redesign our template, so that way the language reflects the process.
I understand your concern, but I still think this is more part, part of the contract. I'm just, that's all I have to say.
So. You have the floor, counsel.
So, if I can just respond, as far as the layout of the actual resolution, that section there is essentially saying that they're agreeing to do this, which is putting in all that stuff, we're agreeing to do this. That now therefore be it resolved is, we've already approved the, as the judge had said, we already entered into the contract.
Right.
So, as far as the wording goes, it's just how it's worded is because it's reflecting the actual project.
What happened if we said no? What happened if we said no?
You still gotta maintain, you still gotta plow.
I get that, but I'm talking about, I'm talking about.
I don't know if I have an answer, but I, yeah, I'll take the floor.
Council President, you have the floor next.
So, I've been debating on whether to bring this up or not, but multiple times throughout the council, before I was here, when Frank was council president, et cetera, these resolutions come before us and there's a function to them. The council's functionally part of this process. The contract we entered into, and a lot of the points you're all making are extremely valid, the question should be asked. However, they, they can be asked now, but if we don't pass this, we might be compelled to pass it, and this is why. The contract was already, we already entered into the contract, and our function in this is to verify that they did the work they said they were gonna do, they did it appropriately, and finished the work before we take ownership of it. It might not be that our purview here is to actually decide if the work should be owned by us when it's complete. Now, obviously, we could pull the original contracts of the five S project, all the different improvements that happened, but that's, I've seen this happen multiple times, and in previous explanations from the judge, the Corporation Council, that's the explanation for why these resolutions come before us now. It's, it's because we're part of the process of verification and deciding when we should take ownership of it, but not necessarily if we should take ownership of it.
And now you have two council people that don't feel that, that it was done accurately.
Right. So, it's a valid question right now. So, to, to Councilperson McNeil's point, okay, there might be a timeline at which if we still disagree with this, it's possible they could compel us to take ownership of it. But at this time, before we pass it, this is the time to ask those questions. So, there you go.
Councilmember Bietriss, you have the floor.
So, going forward on all this stuff, why wouldn't, it's kinda like what Councilman Moody said. Why wouldn't we have, when we vote on this, to do this project, why wasn't it brought to us to say, the state is gonna do this project, and when it is done and completed, we take it over, instead of it's done and then it's come to us? Now, I wasn't on the council at the time. Did it come in front of the council to agree to change it to one lane and do, and, and put the decorative barriers? And did it come in front of the other council to say, when it's complete, you're gonna be part, you guys are worrying about those barriers, how about how much money it's gonna cost to have a guy go snow blow it? We're gonna have to buy a tra, a little tractor to plow it, 'cause you're not gonna use a regular pickup truck. You're gonna be taking care of all them other sidewalks and all that down there. And I know this past winter, I got calls many times, and the state still took care of it, and Jimmy Pacola took care of it. So, my question is, I'm just asking, was this, was this voted on by the prior council to do this job?
I'm sure that every contract that was done with D O P, that involved the federal government, involved the state government, at some point, those contracts were approved.
Okay, so then.
The design was probably approved by you at some point. But there's such a thing and difference between legislative acts completing and a ministerial acts. This is a ministerial act of you finalizing the contract after the work is completed. The only question, did they complete the work? If this legislation came down, they complete the work, and this is the last ministerial act left, then you have to approve the finalization. And the only, you can't talk about the design now, it's over. It's obstruct, and I've talked to state about that. We had this big argument about the north-south highway that went on for months since council. We almost lost seventy, a million dollars because of the same, that's an argument, where people wanted to make the design change.
Introspect the time.
Well, it's hard to navigate, and us all this, that's why we had to provide an engineering program. What, you, who are hard-time employees, and take, whether you approve the design at some point, I'm sure the county council, probably not you, have an ongoing that was done, if it's good, the design, some fact.
So, Judge, so Judge, 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 so you're, you're telling me at some time, this proposal came in front of a council, and they said, when this job is done, the city's responsible to take, the city's responsible to take care of it?
The state view that, there are a lot of paragraphs in that contract, and that agreement with the state, that were not in the legislation you approved. You usually approved a plan. And what the plan had in it, it might be, might be this thick, with sketches and designs, and, and quite frankly, I'm, so, I had, you know, we did, when the progress, never read the picture after, it was, it was that thick, oh, it's a relative broken. So, like, part of the ministerial act. This part is the finalization, the ministerial act. But that does not, rent you from questioning, from asking, talking, decision, city engineering. As a matter of fact, the Corporation Council, city, they're sitting right there, aren't you, sir? And we have, as I say, a, a, contrary to what I had said, about the Corporation Council.
Thank you, Judge. So, I think at this point, we're gonna have one more question from the council president with respect to time, but I wanna kinda just follow back. So, you're gonna find out if there is a time restriction when we actually have to have this taken care of. And the clerk is going to talk to Jimmy Pacola and see if she can get him in here for the next meeting, so he can answer any questions that any of us may have.
What were we to say, Jeff?
Is that good? Okay. Council President, you have the floor.
That's what I was, I was gonna wrap up with. We're, we're gonna bring Jim Pacola in for this. And to your point, the barriers you're talking about aren't specifically in that resolution. So, it's a good point. So, thank you. I do have one more thing, though.
Sure.
That we might need to deal with, which is not necessarily time sensitive, but we do need to wrap these things up so we can complete the city's audit, et cetera. There were E and A transfers that were placed in the committee of the whole fifteen through eighteen. Did you receive any communications, answers, et cetera, for, you know, past the explanations we gave that evening on those?
No, I'm fine. I, I had the chance to actually read them since I had the time, so I'm good.
All right. So, ordinance.
I never, can I be clear about something? I never had any specific questions.
No, you just wanted, you wanted to look at it for a little bit.
They would give it to us on a Monday, and I'm not gonna vote on it on Wednesday.
Totally fine. Totally fine. So, fifteen through eighteen, someone can move from that committee, please? Okay.
So, at this point, we can adjourn the meeting. Is there a second? Thank you.
All right. I will call the meeting to order at ten after. Stick five. Take five.
Okay. First order of business this evening is the minutes of the previous meeting. We have them posted on ECO 360.
I would like to make a motion that we waive the reading of the minutes this evening.
Okay, we have a second from Miola. Is anyone opposed? Okay, the minutes have been accepted by the council from the previous meeting. We have no common council guests this evening, so the next order of business is public hearing. We have the sale of Kennedy Parking Garage for $1.5 million and the sale of 125 Thomas Street for $8,000. There are people signed up this evening to speak on behalf of the Kennedy Parking Garage sale. It's three speakers, Mike Locata, Brian Bowers, and Mike LaFleur. The first person this evening coming up, and we will have a presentation on the flat-screen monitor, is Mike Locata. If you could please come forward. You can speak from the podium if you'd like. If somebody can... You can do the next slide game. I had to do that myself many times. Yes. Please state your name for the record.
Sure.
I can't hear you. Are you suited, Mike?
It doesn't sound like...
Yeah, the switch, you gotta turn the switch on there.
Is that better?
Yeah, there we go. All right, please state your name for the record and you may begin.
My name is Michael Locata. I'm the Vice President at Bowers Development. Thank you all very much for allowing us to come and give you a presentation. With me is Mike LaFleur from Pike Construction, Pike Companies, and Brian Bowers from Bowers Development, not only owning the company, operating the computer. So, we'll get a little presentation because since our last meeting at the URA, there's been a little bit of confusion relative to our commitment to the area and some of the things that we've done, and there have been frankly some disinformation that's come out in the public, and we'd like to clarify that for everybody here, considering it's a big decision for everybody to make. So, we have put together a bit of a presentation relative to... One of the things that... Oh, sorry.
Brian?
Nice. Spoken like a true VP. All right, there we go.
Thank you. So, it's a little bit about us. I can't read it from there. Brian, can you help me out? Essentially, we've invested approximately $8 million in Utica in the past several years, and we have a number of projects. Because one of the criticisms about us that has come out is we don't finish any projects. We've never finished a project. It's kind of... That's an easy one for us to address, and we'll do that with the next slide. Keep going, Brian. Let's just more of our stuff. One of the focuses that we go after are classic buildings in communities that have historic components. Now, if you see, if you can recall, the building on Bleeker Street, 120 Bleeker Street, is that building on the left. It's where Legal Aid Society is now. Single tenant, bunch of attorneys. We used to call that the city's pigeon coop, and it was very bad, and I won't tell anybody the details, but it was in very bad condition to the point where the city was scheduling a demolition of this project. So, we took over the project. And that's what it looks like today. In addition to that being completed and home to about 40 attorneys, we received this award from the Landmark Society of Greater Utica. On the bottom, it says exactly what we did there. Brian, you're gonna have to read it because I can't. Another project, near and dear to the folks in this area, is the New Century Club, directly across the street from Fort Schuyler on the corner of Genesee and Hopper. I don't know if everybody in this room knows this, but that's the second oldest women's club in the country. Susan B. Anthony spoke there, and I mean, there's a lot of history that goes along with this building. It was also scheduled for demolition.
To give you an idea of the condition of this one, we activated when we walked through the building, and we got to the second floor, which is all hardwoods. Stepped right through hardwoods. That's how long it was. Stepped a little closer to the Joyce on the side, stepped right through the house. Between the time our offer was accepted and what we closed, of course, the mansion at the front, the third floor is left.
This is a work in progress, but this is what she looks like right now. Now, this building and the next building were components to the application for the DRI that Utica won $10 million from New York State. And those funds are gonna be attached to these projects for additional redevelopment. This is 1900 Bleeker Street, right at the corner of Bleeker and Culver, the former GE building that used to manufacture radios here. You see, the second floor in the building on the left has been removed. We're converting this into a 90,000-square-foot distribution center. It's right that close to the Route 5S. It's about 1.8 miles from the thruway, and we've had a fair amount of interest in that because there's a lot of interest in distribution facilities right now. Next project?
And it gives everybody a timeline here. We should be fully enclosed, the whole building, by the end of November.
That's what we're shooting for. Yep.
We should be... So, we should be fully enclosed by November. At that point, we do have some tenants that we're talking to as soon as we're able to put in those new facilities in the interior. By spring.
What's the New Century? You mentioned that you wanted to do it in the spring.
Yep. So, we'll get into it here shortly. As far as the New Century Club, you had the Kempf Building, so it's part of the DRI process. We were told we had to stop. You know, because it's part of the whole, you know, system, that's how it actually works. You know, because we're award recipients, and we were to continue work on all the projects. Those funds were available. You know, I can tell you, we were able to convince the SPO to move us somewhere. So, all through COVID, we worked on all the building. Inside, we were able to repair, you know, asbestos abatement, we put new roofs on all the structures, so it worked pretty good.
That's an example of a project in Canostota, which will similar... It'll be similar... The Bleeker Street location will be similar to the picture on the right, not to the picture on the left. This is the interior of that exact same building before and after. And the tenant in there is Dutchland Plastics. They make Yeti coolers and have already talked to us about a potential expansion they're doing so well.
Let's distribute them out of Utica.
Beg your pardon?
Let's distribute the Yeti coolers out of Utica.
We're gonna do our darndest. We are... It's not from lack of trying, I'll tell you right now. So, yeah, we will do our best. Kempf Building, and you probably all familiar with this, right on Genesee Street, 248 to 250. This is what it looked like originally when it was built, and next to it is 252. Those two buildings are joined, but two separate structures.
Kind of unique, this smaller building, which is right next to Fort Schuyler, really hard to make out here, but if you look at the sign on the second floor, it's an international maintenance machine. So, I actually was in that building, and down at the far end, we actually found that second soul machine.
So, that's when it was built. This is what it looks like today, and it's... We'll take...
Once again, this is part of the DRI.
This is the DRI, yep. And this is what we have planned for that as soon as those funds get released. Okay? Yep.
Yeah, I can... I mean, I know before we bought it, New Century was made in 14 years. Security building was built in 18 years. This one had a handful of retail folks, besides the house, are still there. Check cashing, you know, was in there. But when you went through the building, asbestos, mold, lead, several of the tenants had used some of the vacant basements, basically upstairs, for personal matters. So, there was excessive rat problem, happened in there. Also, if you go through the building now, everything's been abated, cleaned, most of the selection demolition is done, you know, we're basically waiting for this DRI to set up.
This is a building in front of St. Joe's Hospital in Syracuse, 607 James Street. Two-story, 38,000 square feet. That's what's going to be... That's what it is going to be turned into. Where we are set to talk with the folks in Syracuse on September... Or, I'm sorry. Yeah, September 9th. One of the other... So, that addresses the question about us not having finished any projects. One of them is, we don't have any funding. Well, we have a letter from Pathfinder Bank indicating that they're more than happy to provide us. They've done a lot of work with us, and that they'll... Of course, it's contingent upon a bunch of other information, but they've indicated that they're prepared and willing to finance the purchase of the ramp. Now, I'd like to ask Mike LaFleur to come up, and he can talk about Pike's experience relative to our plans on this ramp. Here you go, Mike.
Thank you. So, first, thanks everyone for having us. It's a real honor to be speaking here tonight. I'm here on behalf of Pike Company. My name is Michael LaFleur. I'm a project director for Pike. I live right here in Barnabell and do a lot of work around the area, so, like I said, happy to be here. Want to talk a little bit about who we are. If you wouldn't mind, this is unusual, asking one of our clients to run my PowerPoint for me here, but I do appreciate it, Brian. So, we're a fifth-generation, family-owned business founded in 1873. Our, you know, five generations was something we're very proud of. There's a standing joke within Pike that usually the first generation, you know, comes up with a really great idea, the second generation expands upon the idea, the third generation screws it up. So, we've made it through five, and, you know, it's been quite the journey and, you know, one that we're very proud of. 82% repeat customers. We think that's an important stat. It tells you kind of the breadth of our work. You know, a lot of people come back and look forward to working with us again in the future, so that's a stat that is important to us. We worked in 24 states. We're in our top 150. One of the best companies in New York to work for, 11 years strong. That's another one that's near and dear to our hearts. Important to our leadership that our employees are happy and enjoy what they're doing every day. And we're, you know, roughly an 800 million to a billion-dollar company a year in constructed value, so, you know, we're out there building, you know, from Buffalo to the Capitol District, points north and south, and, like I said, in 24 states. Next. So, we wanted to just touch upon some of the local projects we've been involved in. You see the list here. I won't read word for word here, but you'll notice the list on the right does have a denotation. Those are our projects we're currently working with Bowers Development on. The list on the left kind of outlines some of the local projects. A few that aren't on there that are a little near and dear to me. I did the new Gibbons exhibit at the Utica Zoo. That was one of my projects. I've done some work at some of the local universities as well, but, you know, like I said, we have several folks that live in this area, work in this area, and are excited at the opportunity to build more in the area. So, a few projects we thought that just would be important to highlight, some relative experience based on the Kennedy Garage. So, this is a project in Saratoga Springs, about a $5 million parking garage, 454 parking spaces for the city of Saratoga Springs. You know, real nice project for us in the Capitol District, and, you know, starts to highlight some of the garage experience that we have. Next one is the Capitol District Citiatic Center Parking Garage Repairs. 1,200-space garage, 3.5 million in repairs for the Dormitory of... Yeah, excuse me, Dormitory Authority of New York. Another real nice project, rehab project similar to this. The Parking Garage at College Town. This is a project I constructed a few years back, 200... Or, I'm sorry, 948 parking spaces, about an $18 million new garage. Actually, we tore down a few old science labs and space that wasn't being utilized by the U of R and built it right next to Strong Memorial Hospital for College Town Rochester, another developer. Very good. SUNY UMU Parking Garage, Press Room Bridge, so 1,200-space garage, 18 and 1/2 million-dollar new parking facility at SUNY Upstate Medical University. Similar experience, you know, there's talk about what to do beyond that. The Courtyard Marriott, this kind of dives into some of the hotel experience that we have. This 119-room, $16 million hotel that we built in Lake George a few years back. Hilton Garden Inn. This is a project that was actually right next to that U of R garage that we built. Really nice hotel that... Another project I was involved with. 138 rooms, $15 million, quick turnaround, tough site, but got it done, and it's a fantastic project. And if you're out to the U of R and need a place to stay, I highly recommend it. The Delago Resort Casino Hotel fit-out, so it was a $10 million fit-out. I don't know if anybody's been there. It's a pretty nice facility. We finished a few years back, 205 rooms, you know, more of that hotel experience that we have. And just, you know, some of the stuff that sets us apart a little bit is some of our use of current technology. So, we, you know, a few years ago, made a big investment to try and, you know, make sure that we were using all the modern technology available to us to build these facilities. So, we've invested in high-definition laters or scanning, BIM coordination and clash detection, so we can actually take plans that the architects provide us, build them in three dimensions, lay it out, and then physically measure the buildings, if you will, within that three-dimensional space to make sure that the drawings are, in fact, coordinated with the existing conditions. This is something that, you know, we do in-house. We're quite proud of it, as you probably tell, but it's something that we do that we think really sets us apart and would be a real benefit to the project that we're discussing here tonight. So, with that, turn it back over to Mike, and just like I said, thank you very much for having us.
One of the other things that people have said is that Pike is not committed to this project. Mike's wife is about to have their third child like any minute now. If that doesn't tell you his commitment, I don't know what else is gonna tell you. So, we wish you all the best of luck with your wife, too. So, what we're proposing also, on top of the parking garage, is approximately 80 to 100-room, four-story hotel. We're talking with a few different operators right now, but right there is the angle coming from Columbia Street looking in at the hotel. If you want to see an aerial... Well, that's another street view. The hotel on the right, the parking garage on the right, the hospital straight ahead. And this is how it would make this sort of medical campus come together. All right? Does everybody see that okay? All right. We think this is going to be a great addition to the downtown Business Development District, and we're excited about this project. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to the common council and everyone here for any questions. Certainly.
I didn't realize that you were actually gonna be here, so I grilled Mr. Thomas in our pre-conference meeting, but there was a couple things I forgot to add. What is... So, a couple things. You guys talked about two other projects, and you're waiting on a DRI. Did DRI want...
That's right. Mm-hmm.
And obviously, we're gonna get it, but let's say you didn't get that money. What happens then?
When we start? We can't do it now.
I understand. You did not get their funding from the DRI. All of a sudden, something came up, and you didn't get that money. You guys could finish the project on your own.
Absolutely.
We don't need that money.
Okay.
But we'll take it.
No.
We want it. And then fortunately, it's what they refer to it, and you're probably aware of this already. It's called "but for money." But for the state's money, the project wouldn't go. And so, when you do the project, they said, "You didn't need our money. You did it."
Right.
Sorry, you're done. So, it's kind of a strange... It's economic development by stopping economic development. I don't want to criticize the state, but that's what it is. We're prepared... But it's a good question. That's a legit question. What's gonna happen? We own those properties. We're not contingent. We're gonna move forward with them.
Now, the timeframe on this project with this parking garage and the hotel work, do you have a timeframe?
Yeah, that was included in the original submission, and the total was 22 months.
22 months. Okay. And by some chance, if the, you know, if the hotel was stalled, are we going through the parking garage anyways? We're gonna keep going through if there was no hotel?
Yeah. So, when we do development, you know, it's... You don't want just to have one plan, you know, going in. You always want to have a backup idea. I mean, we're very confident in this hotel matchup. I mean, aside from having several hotel operators that we've talked to already, we also have multiple physicians that we've talked to that have expressed the need, the way that a lot of insurance works these days, by actually having that connected to the medical campus, a lot of patients are actually able to stay in the hotel rooms.
Great.
Have insurance covered. So, one of the potential hotel operator actually mentioned to us that one of the projects they did was how that company... They have never dipped below 92%.
Listen, I think before you guys came in front of me, my committee, the office committee I'm on, I didn't realize that you were doing...
Please use your mic. Thanks.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't realize that you were even doing a hotel. I just thought it was the parking garage. So, my question is, when I seen the project with the hotel and all you have here, I think it's wonderful, and I'm all for this project, but I just want to know, there's a lot of talk with this airspace, there's a lot of quivering about everything. If by some chance, you could not put the hotel there, are you gonna take this garage and build the garage and keep the garage the way it is?
Yeah, our plan is to...
Okay. Thank you.
One of the things, you know, to point out in the design of it, I mean, we were very familiar with the airlines that the hospital has, so we didn't want to encroach on that. So, you can actually see the hotel stepped back, you know, away from their air rights. So, we didn't encroach on those.
Okay. One last question, and I won't ask anything again. We currently have, I believe, 75 to 80 parking spots the city has there, and I know you've mentioned that when I asked before, but I just want to be on record again, you guys will have no problem working with us so we could use those parking spots and stuff.
Absolutely not. When this was first discussed, you know, that need that you had was brought to our attention.
Right.
You know, obviously, moving forward with us, a lot of people would want to turn around and step back. You know, we'd be the people that's...
Thank you very much, and lots of luck to you. I think it's a great project.
Thank you very much.
I have some questions, similar to Mr. Beatrice's questions. So, I guess I'm still... Like, tell me more about why you think a hospital... A hotel is needed here. What's the capacity rate of the Delta? What's our capacity rate of Hotel Utica? I mean, we're putting up, or not we, but a lot of people are putting up a lot of hotels in Utica all of a sudden, and this is going to be a very good regional hospital. Is it necessarily gonna be a hospital people come from six hours away in order to stay in a hotel, in order to use the hospital? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. The true benefit of this is gonna be the proximity, you know, to the hospital and future homes. And also, if insurance will actually pick up a lot of those spots during recovery. So, one of our physicians that, you know, we're partnered with and other vendors, he basically mentioned to us, having that in such close proximity, he usually has 20 to 25 families, you know, that have to stay in town because there are significant others who are getting surgery.
Except, I guess what I'm thinking is, if this is an excellent regional hospital, the vast majority of people who will use this hospital will be within driving distance of their homes, as opposed to, say, in a place like the Mayo Clinic or in a lot of the Boston hospitals. People would travel for five, six, seven, eight hours to get to those hospitals. Is this gonna be that kind of a hospital where people... They're gonna be within driving distance of home?
No, that's legitimate question. We like that question. The reason is, a lot of these smaller... Like Albany Medical has about 100 rooms close by because there are some procedures, for instance, in this personal experience. My wife had a hip replacement. It's easier for a person with a low-level recovery to be in a hotel room rather than a hospital bed.
Okay.
It's not as serious concerns. You don't need round-the-clock observation like you would for open-heart surgery.
Right.
So, you get those folks out of the hospital convalescing overnight or maybe two nights in a hotel, and they don't have the paging Dr. Green, paging, "We're gonna take your temperature," but there is a full-time nurse in the hotel room with my wife 24/7. But she was able to sleep. We ordered meals from the restaurants. It was all covered under the insurance, and those are the patients that the hospital will take a significant component off the floors. And it's less expensive. I'm sorry. That's the other reason.
It's the middle ground, then, between, say, open-heart surgery where you're in ICU for days, and a genuine day procedure where you go to the clinic, you have your, you know, meniscus tear repaired, and you go home.
Absolutely.
It's the middle ground between those two.
Yep, and that was one of the reasons at that hospital, Albany Med, throughout COVID, where everybody dropped down to 20%, they kept 92% occupancy.
Am I mistaking something, but for this hotel, it doesn't necessarily have to be just for the hospital.
No, not at all.
You have the Nexus Center coming where you're gonna have many people staying overnight.
Right.
You have the auditorium where the Comets play. There's gonna be people staying there all the time. So, this is not just for the patients of the hospital. It's convenient for them.
Right.
But it's for anybody to stay in. Am I correct in saying that?
Absolutely correct.
Okay, thank you.
Also, what we've contemplated in all the hotel works that we've talked to, really like the identical concept is, we're actually putting in multiple conference and vendor, you know, vendor rooms. So, what's happened now with the hotel there, you know, they're trying to restrict the amount of patient, you know, non-patient room, I guess, you know, that actually comes into the hospital. So, what you're seeing now is a lot more meetings, basically, in public, off-site, in close proximity. So, the physicians that were partnered with another endeavor basically said, "We don't want these folks coming into our offices anymore." You know, if they're coming in out of town, pharmaceutical sales, medicine sales, they'll be able to stay right at that hotel, booked that room, will meet, come over from the hospital or non-need, you know, and then they can go back. So, it's actually very... The whole idea has been picked around and contemplated.
So, just following up, when you said, I don't remember which you said it, but that insurance will often pay for this hotel room? Is that Medicare? Is that private insurance? I mean, who pays... Which insurance companies pay for hotel rooms?
I think that wouldn't be germane to this discussion during the public hearing, I think. I'm just...
Well, I was actually just asking for a follow-up about something that Mr. Locata said.
I'm not sure is the honest answer, but we can find out for you.
Did I hear right earlier?
You did.
You said, "Insurance will pay for these hotel rooms."
Sure.
So, I'm just trying to ask...
I have private insurance, and they covered the room.
Okay.
If there's any other questions specifically to do with the development and the sale of the property, which that is what this public hearing is for, I'd like to... Because of the substance of this, that's why we've opened this up to more of a guest-speaker type of format here. If anyone else has any other questions, do you have a question for them?
I'd just like to say...
All right, then Councilman LaMedico, I will... I'll hand you the floor after that. Okay? Because I just want to move this along. Thank you.
So, coming from a family of developers, I know the risk it takes developing properties like this, especially when they're in such disrepair as the other ones that you are working on. I just want to thank you for investing in our city because your vision is great, and I've seen it come to fruition, and I am excited to see this hospital, and I am excited to see everything that it's going to bring with it, including these hotels and parking garages that are getting, you know, renovated that have been in such disrepair for so long. So, thank you. I think you deserve that as well because there's much scrutiny that comes with that challenge and with that, you know, undertaking that you take, and I've been in that spot, so I just want to give you that light at the end of the tunnel. Thank you, and I look forward to seeing you.
Thank you.
Councilman LaMedico?
Appreciate that.
Well, I'd just like to follow up on what Maria said, just to start off. We're excited to have you here. We think it's a great idea having the hospital next door to the parking lot there and the hotel on... Just two questions specifically. In the event that it fills up, is there any room for expansion on additional floors if that be the case?
So, this parking garage was originally constructed in 1962, a hotel. of hotel on top of it. So for those that have actually been in it, it's quite a structure. It's actually been significantly older, you know? So we can actually go up to six stories.
Okay. So you could put a couple more on, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we'd have to have structural engineers like...
Right. And just from my union friends, are you guys a union shop? Do you hire union companies to do the work?
So we're an open shop. So the other day, 1900 Laker, we had, you know, a local position metal group that stopped by the site. We, on that project, we're working with Chase Construction, made the introductions. I mean, we basically have everybody, you know, who wants to bid, you know, more so, we're more interested in local competition. People bid the projects. I'll give you a great example. New Century Club, the bids came in for the masonry. The wasn't... They weren't the lowest bidder, but Bikini Construction Union Group, better qualifications, better approach, you know, better schedule.
So are you meeting with the union representatives for the different...
Like I said...
Prior to your actual building?
We're open.
All right, cool.
Any groups that are interested in working on our projects, we invite them all in, and they have the same opportunities.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Anyone?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And thank you for the time and presentation.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing it.
All right.
Do you want me to grab my computer now?
Yeah, you could do that if you'd like. Yeah. All right. So I'm also compelled... We have a letter from the hospital, which was directed to the mayor and presented to the council. Do you all have a copy of this from MVHS TM, I believe? Yes, you all have the letter. Perfect. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I would like to make sure that everyone has read this letter prior to the consideration of the property and that it's been received and filed by the council people. I believe it must be a typo, but the letter's dated December 21st, 2020. I would like to just put that out there. Which seems odd because they're writing about things that would have been in the future. But no, I'm going to read just excerpts of this before we do that and just to note that it's been received by the council. "While MVHS appreciates you and your staff taking time to develop a potential alternative parking plan, MVHS remains committed to a parking garage as a central element of the overall parking plan. This has been contemplated for several years and is discussed in detail in the 2017 memorandum of agreement. Although the MOA was not legally binding document, it was at least aspirational and the expression of the outline of a parking plan agreed to by all parties. It is our understanding that the county is proceeding with the design process and completion of real property acquisition. We have been assured that County Executive Passini remains committed to the construction of the garage. We believe that the new parking garage with ancillary service parking would be more in-keeping and fitting for a new state-of-the-art hospital. It appears that the city's alternative plan proposes 300 spots for a parcel of land presently intended to be the site of the medical office building, et cetera. Further, we believe that the availability of garage parking will enhance the comfort and safety of our staff and visitors. We remain hopeful and convinced that the cooperative development of a comprehensive parking plan, which includes the parking garage, will serve the new hospital and the community. We thank you and your continued support from MVHS as we work together with you and County Executive Passini for the successful completion of the hospital project and revitalization of downtown Utica." So that was given to us in relation to this. But I'm going to close the public hearing. There's no one signed up to speak on behalf of 125 Thomas Street. So pull these up here. Do we have a motion to remove the sale of Kennedy Park Garage from committee? We have a motion from Williamson II, from Miola. Any opposed to pulling that from committee? Okay. The sale of Kennedy Park Garage for the sum of $1.5 million. That ordinance is on the floor. Your votes?
Eight yeas, adopted.
Thank you. Okay. Do we have a motion to remove the sale of 125 Thomas Street for $8,000 from committee? We have a motion from Williamson II, from Moody. Any opposed? All right. The sale of 125 Thomas Street for a sum of $8,000 is on the floor for your votes.
Eight yeas, adopted.
Thank you very much. All right. So that closes public hearing and all of the legislation we had a public hearing for. Public comment period. It's the next order of business. Thank you all who have attended for public hearing. Moving on to public comment, we do have three speakers. Jim DiRollo, could you please come forward? Common Council's provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. So please state your name for the record, and then you may begin.
My name is Jim DiRollo. And thank you for having me here and being able to speak. I apologize for reading off of this, but it's pretty short. So my name is Jim DiRollo. My family has lived in South Utica for 25 years. And my wife has a business in downtown Utica for the last 15 years or so. The reason why I'm here tonight is to voice my concerns about the panhandling that's going on at the Parkway as well as the homeless taking over the Oneida Square Roundabout area. Two big concerns that I'm sure you've seen it, you've heard it before. I've sent emails to Celeste Friend and the mayor's office voicing my concerns, and I appreciate the mayor's office as well as Police Chief Williams' response regarding these issues. But I'm not pleased. I'm not pleased with it. Okay? What they tell me is that the panhandlers are expressing their freedom of speech, the rights that they have. And if they do move them out, then in a short period of time, they just come right back in, take up their space, and continue on. Regarding the homeless at Oneida Square, the police are, in my opinion, just keeping the area safe, basically 24/7, because they say their hands are tied. I know there is some issue with the church across the street that has kind of changed things down there in the last two years because it seems like we really never had this a couple of years ago. And it seems like now that the church is there, or whatever the problem is... I'm not an expert in this. I just drive down Genesee Street, and I see the conditions. And I say to myself, "We're doing great things in the city of Utica." You just watched the presentation about development going on downtown. This is a half a mile away from it. Everybody drives downtown, is going through that roundabout. They're seeing the panhandlers on the Parkway. They're seeing the condition of the roundabout. And they can't be happy. It's just not good. And I understand. It's a complex problem. It's not something that can be fixed with a switch or a police officer or this or that. But what do we do? If this was down at the exit 31 on the thruway? Not a good sight. And we're doing great things here in the city. I'm also concerned about what effect the Oneida Square condition might have on the Levitt Amp concerts that are going on in the park on Monday nights. These are great concerts. A lot of people come down to enjoy them. But parents bringing their children down into that environment at 6:00, 7:00 o'clock at night? I would not bring my kids down. I'm sorry. I would love to come down, but I don't trust myself. Sometimes I can, you know, say the wrong thing at the wrong time, and it's just not good. It's not a good place. But it's a great concert series that goes on. And it would be a shame if the city of Utica lost something like that from the other side of it, not necessarily from parents. Okay? Maybe they might say, "Maybe this isn't a good spot for this money to be spent." I don't know. Just throwing it out there. Like I said, the city has done some great things, a lot of great things with the downtown beautification projects. But again, this is an eyesore that everybody sees when they're heading downtown. Okay? Same thing when I came down here tonight. I was hesitating whether I should come down. And I says, "You know what? I did my emails. I don't feel right if I don't come here and speak." Sure enough, I'm coming through Genesee Street like I always do. The one person over there with the shopping cart is over at the Parkway. I continue on. There is three or four of the homeless people with their bags laying on the side. One's in front of the monument. Police officer is in the... The car is parked at...
Dunkin' Donuts.
Dunkin' Donuts. I almost wanted to say Dandy Donuts. I don't want to give you my age and all that. But anyways... And I'm thinking, "Here we go." I mean, it's 6:30 at night. And the scene's already set again. And that whole area, and you know this, I'm preaching to the choir here, that whole area of Oneida Square has got enough issues within itself anyways. The more that's acceptable and the more that's okay is the more it's going to get worse. And it's not good for the city. And again, I don't want to come on here, you know...
And so, Mr. DiRollo, your time has been passed. I did let you go through your points. So if you want to wrap up, it would be greatly appreciated.
And matter of fact, they only have like one more sentence here that I do want to throw in because I don't want to come off too hard and all that. But I know this is a complex problem to solve, and I have great empathy for the people of need here. So I understand. It's not a heartless situation here. But the city does need to do better. And I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ava Sisson Wright, could you please come forward? Thank you. The Common Council has provided you a copy of Section 3244, Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record, and then you may begin.
My name is Ava Sisson Wright. What else did you say? My name and what else?
Oh, that's good. For the record.
Oh, that was it?
Yeah, perfect.
How you doing today? Thanks for having me. My name is Ava, and I am the current president of the Utica Bulldogs, local Pop Warner team. And I just took over last year. We didn't have a season because of COVID, obviously. So this is our first year coming back. We served just under 200 children this season. We could have easily put about 300 on the field if we had the proper equipment. I had to turn too many kids away this season. However, since I've taken over, my goal has been to change... I'm short. Change the feel and the direction of the Utica Bulldogs. And I understand that there was some negative reputations and just things that happened in the past. Utica Bulldogs been around for about 15 years or so. And I've implemented a whole new board. And we're doing a lot of changes that positively include and influence our community. But as we hold ourselves accountable... When I say ourselves, I mean the organization as a whole and the parents and everything else. There are some things that I feel like the city needs to help us with as far as Proctor Park. While we hold a permit with Proctor Park, and I feel like the concession stand over there... I don't know who's in charge of the concession stand or who was supposed to maintain that concession stand. But honestly, if it was to go to be a building to serve food of, the Health Department would not pass it. There's no running hot water in there. There are lights broken in there, mice infestation in there. I had a group of parents go in there and just completely clean it out. The refrigeration, the mice ate through the wiring of the refrigeration in that concession stand. So I don't understand how it is able to be used by youth associations to prepare food. We share it with baseball also, although I haven't seen baseball there this season. But I don't know who's in charge of that. We need someone to look over there. There's a ton of, in my opinion, garbage. However, I don't know who's in charge of it. There's lawn mowers in there. There's old Pepsi coolers in there. There's just tons of stuff in there that I would like to just get, like a bulldozer, and push it all out into the garbage. I understand maintaining it. And I understand that as an association, you give us the keys, we need to use it and maintain it for the period. But at this point, it's beyond maintenance. It really just needs to be fixed. The baseball fencing, there's like grass buildup. The only part that looks really nice at Proctor Park is the new field. And it's a disservice because when we have other associations coming through, we'll have Syracuse teams coming out, Rochester teams coming out. They come and see us from Camden. And I make big pushes with Tri Valley, which is our governing league, to make sure that our association is taken seriously and that before there were associations that were like, "Oh, we don't want to come out. We don't feel safe. We don't feel safe." And I'm like, "I don't know why you don't feel safe in Syracuse." However, we bring them out to our field, and you got all of these different structural issues. The tree that's right next to the concession stand in the middle of the field, in my opinion, again, should just go. It is falling down in the weather. It falls on the structure. The leaves of it clogs, the gutters all around the side. There's just so much. I can continue to go on. I need no parking signs out there. The police came to me, and they asked, "Hey, we don't want the cars out here during practicing games." Okay, cool. I go on our Facebook page. I go on our parent things, "Hey, no parking, no parking, no parking." However, I'm one person. My board is up six. We can't walk around and govern 200. Parents, and some of them, we got multiple parents coming out on the field. And then I went to the police station. I'm like, "Hey, can you guys come through every once in a while?" And just like push them out. If I'm telling them, "Hey, you can't park here because I don't want the city calling me," and then the police drive past and they don't go and tell them, they're like, "Oh, well, the police don't care. It's just Ava being, you know, a name that they'll call me." Right? So if we get you guys to kind of like come through...[1535.34] So if we get you guys to kind of like come through, and I've went to the police station, I've gave them our schedule, come through. I'm trying to make the environment a more comfortable environment to where people do feel safe and they come to Utica and they want to be. We're one of the only associations that have a full concession where you have the running water, although no hot water. I don't know how we clean. Um, but, uh, we're one of the only ones that have it. I want us to stay in Utica strong. Um, we aren't just about winning, which we do very well. Um, but it's not about that. It's about bringing pride to our city. It's about our youth having a positive outlet. It's about being Utica strong, okay? But it is embarrassing to have all of these people coming over here and we're in full disarray over there. Um, so if you guys can just have my back, because I don't mind standing up and I tell everybody anything. And, you know, um, we gonna get it done, but I can't do it alone. And again, I don't know who's in charge of stuff because I, I'm very good at pointing. You send me a crew and I'll tell them what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Uh, the final speaker this evening, Ron Vincent, could you please come forward? The Common Council provided you a copy of Section 3244 Public Comment Period Rule. Are you in agreement with this?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and you have the floor.
My name is Ron Vincent. I'm here tonight. I'd like to commend our DPW for the fantastic job they did in North Utica after that rainstorm that we had. They spent four consecutive days picking up tree limbs, branches, and also our Parks Department for taking down broken trees. The next week after that, Monday and Tuesday, they were there for two more days picking up branches and limbs that people had brought out of their yards and put out to the road. I'd also like to, uh, commend our fire department for being there on the scene and blocking off streets that were flooded and pumping out people's cellars. We also had fire department people from the town of Skylar and the town of Deerfield over in North Utica pumping out cellars. I'd also like to thank our engineering department. They've been up there, it seems like every other day, reviewing the different things, cleaning out gutters and, pipes that go underground. And, uh, as a matter of fact, Stephanie told me tonight, she's coming, the crew, the contractors coming over a week from today to start working on the cricks even more so. The storm that we had about three weeks ago, everybody thought was a tornado. I looked into it. It was a straight wind with 60 to 70 mile an hour winds that came down. I couldn't see across the street. It looked like a snow blizzard. The rain was so thick. But, uh, there was houses in our neighborhood that got destroyed. Trees fell on their roofs, on their cars. I talked to a guy on my way over here, lives down the street from me. His car was totaled. Uh, when a tree fell on his house, it also fell on the car in his driveway. I thought it just broke the windshield and put a dent in the roof. But when the branch went through, it also took his dash and shoved it down to the floor. I didn't see it. It was horrendous what happened. Shortly after that, we had a couple, three more storms. Not a lot, just some rain, but our ground was so saturated in this city that the typical North Utica Werzav area got flooded out again. You could go by the harbor and see the water. It looked like it was just about ready to come over to the top. If anybody ever travels after a storm like that on the Arterial and you look down and you see that the canal is running about three feet higher than the Mohawk River, but the Mohawk River is flooding out North Genesee Street. If you want to go on a little bit further, I'm not an engineer, but I've been studying these rainstorms in North Utica for 42 years. If you drive from Marcy to Skylar, there are five areas where there's overflows from the Erie Canal into the Mohawk. When you see this high water, if you look at the Mohawk just outside of the Cana-, uh, the harbor, that water's 25, 30 feet deep. If you go down to Skylar and you see it go under Dyke Road, it looks like it's a horrendous flood. But that water's only about five, six feet deep. With all the water coming in from the south side of the city, all that water pools up, where does it go? Does it go further up over a high spot? No, it backs up. It goes into our harbor and into North Genesee Street. That's our problem. That's what we need help with. If one solution I could come up with, but again, I'm not an engineer. If they take the Erie Canal, Barge Canal, whatever you want to call it, and take those overflows and build them up about two more feet, that water won't come over and assist all the water coming from the south that floods out North Genesee Street area. All they have to do is open the locks, let the water flow. You know where it goes? It goes to the Hudson River, then into the Atlantic Ocean. They can eat it up a lot more than we can in Utica. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the final public comment this evening. I appreciate everyone who does come out, take the time to speak to the council. It does create more action than simply emailing as one of the prior speakers mentioned. All right. So the next order of business this evening. Communications from the mayor. We do have a rather sizable communication from the mayor. Um, a lot of it was actually part of the prior communication, so I may, um, summarize some of it. Uh, this is the communication from Mayor Robert Paul Mary, September 1st, 2021. Mayor's message to the Common Council. There are several important legislative items before the council. In July, the Urban Renewal Agency approved the sale of Kennedy Garage to a private developer for 1.5 million. As previously stated, the sale of Kennedy Garage would yield tremendous benefits to Utica taxpayers, et cetera. Considering the fact that we have passed that, um, I'm going to summarize. Um, there are some comments here regarding the, oh, well, yeah, I'm, yeah. The mayor's message, for the record. Um, has the Common Council received the mayor's message? Yes? And you have read the full mayor's message and it's been received? Uh, okay, this was to myself and the members of the Common Council. We've received this. Um, as the mayor was going on, in an attempt to derail this positive development for the city, false claims have been made that the city never discussed the opportunity with Mohawk Valley Health Systems to acquire Kennedy. Attached is a correspondence from MVHS that states while it was appreciated that the city was making Kennedy available, it was concerned about the lack of funding sources to make necessary repairs in the garage. This makes sense. Now, this was paired with, uh, a different order of business. This letter is probably from December, which is why it seems so out of context. Um, this letter was in response to the conversation I had with, I, the mayor's words, uh, with MVHS officials about this matter and disapproves any claim that the city did not provide MVHS the opportunity to acquire Kennedy. Furthermore, since URA approved the sale of Kennedy Garage, the city has met with MVHS officials several times and MVHS has not once expressed any interest in purchasing the garage. There have also been reports regarding the city's decision not to pursue eminent domain at 411 Columbia Street, the O'Brien Plumbing and Heating Building, for the construction of a medical office building. First and foremost, the administration agrees with MVHS that a medical office building is needed asset for the new downtown medical campus. As such, the same developer who wants to purchase Kennedy has signed a purchase agreement with the owners of 411 Columbia Street and is partnering with prominent local physicians to construct a medical office building that will be larger and provide more medical services for patients. In several meetings and conversations, I encouraged MVHS officials to secure the O'Brien property by making an offer that reflects the value of its overall development plans. MVHS did not do this and as a result of its failure to secure the property through a private transaction, it now wants a government entity to take property on behalf of a private business to benefit an exclusive group of physicians it favors. In addition to the administration's position that taking private property from one developer just to give to another is improper, why would a government entity pursue eminent domain when there will be the same end use unless medical services provided? Other exciting developments have occurred throughout the city recently. Last week, the administration announced the URA's approved art space purchase option for 1018 and 1022 Park Avenue to construct live work units for local artists. This announcement was a result of working collaboratively with all parties to come to a palatable solution. I thank Art Space for investing in our community and project partners, such as the Community Foundation of Herkimer and Oneida Counties and National Grid for their strong support. Lastly, another important legislative item before the council's approving, a residency waiver for Larry Kinney to become the city's electrical inspector. After an extensive and lengthy search, Mr. Kinney is the best candidate who meets all the qualifications for the position as outlined in the previous mayor's message. The administration took the following actions to advertise the position since June of 2020. This was, uh, in grave detail outlined at the last meeting. And to end the mayor's message, Mr. Kinney would be a tremendous resource to the assets of the city and a residency waiver is needed to fill the important position. That ends the mayor's message. Thank you. All right. Reports from the city officers. Chief Ingersoll. Thank you. Corporation counsel?
Uh, no, but I'll just note that I sent, uh, Judge a memo that I sent to the mayor regarding panhandling. Uh, so if you wish to review it in addition to the comments that I believe he sent you, um, please reach out to him.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Because that has, um, come up also for the people still here who spoke. Uh, that's come up in multiple meetings and it is something that has come up on the floor and we've discussed the length. Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
Nothing.
Thank you. Commissioner Phillips.
I want to say, um, dovetailing on the mayor's message, um, I, I, I know it wasn't discussed in pre-caucus, but I do think it's important that the city eventually or, or somehow has an electrical inspector. Um, I think the service to our residents, um, is, is invaluable and that's what we're here to do. Is, is to, to provide a service to make everybody safer and, and, and to make this a better city. And that should be the focus of what we all try to do as government officials. With that being said, no more words.
Thank you. Deputy Chief Noonan.
Nothing to report.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you're doing earlier today. Uh, you're donating some time. It's great. Um, that ends reports from the city officers. Do we have any miscellaneous communications? I don't believe we have a cash report this evening.
No, we do not.
All right. Thank you. All right. Okay. Petitions, remonstrances, and appeals. First District, Majority Leader, Ray McNeely, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd like to remove Resolution Number Three and call for a public hearing on the sale of 315-317 Court Street. Whereas the City of Utica, City of Utica Urban Renewal Agency is the owner of 315-317 Court Street. And whereas the City of Utica Urban Renewal Agency is authorized to sell development parcels in said urban renewal area to prospective developer pursuant to the requirement set forth in Article 15, Section 507 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York. And whereas an offer to purchase 315-317 Court Street has been received by the Utica Urban Renewal Agency from Michael Pezzelenella. And whereas the developer plans to renovate for mixed use. And whereas the purchase price for this property would be 400,000. And whereas the chairman of the Urban Renewal Agency has been authorized to execute a contract of sale with the aforementioned developer, subject to the developer meeting with all applicable terms and conditions relative to the purchase of the subject property, including the approval of the same by the Utica Common Council. And whereas the Urban, the Utica Urban Renewal Agency shall cause to be published a public hearing notice and legal notice which describes all relevant terms and conditions of the proposed sale in the Observer Dispatch newspaper in accordance with Article 15 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York. And public hearing shall be held pursuant thereof in accordance with Section 507 of the General Municipal Law of the State of New York. And now therefore be it resolved that the Utica Common Council will conduct a public hearing on Wednesday, September 15th, 2021, at 7:00 PM in the Utica Common Council Chambers, 1 Kennedy Plaza, Utica, New York, to provide the public with an opportunity to ask questions and offer comments on the proposed sale and subsequent development of the after said properties. Immediately after the public hearing, the Utica Common Council may consider legislation will, which will approve the sale of 315-317 Court Street and authorize the chairman of Utica Urban Renewal Agency to execute all necessary documents to sell said property. I'd also like to recuse myself from this vote as it is my family.
Okay. Um, is there a second? We have a second from Miola. Any discussion? Your votes. Okay, thank you. Would you like the floor?
Sure, or I'll just qualify my vote.
Okay. I mean, we won't have to pull the lever yet, so, you know, but, oh, we didn't. No, we didn't yet. Yeah, so as you were saying.
I, I'm going to be a no on this. I just think that we're rushing this too much. I'm skeptical of only getting $400,000 for this building. Um, I think that there's a lot of public questions out there that we're hearing in social media, et cetera, about how quickly this has gone through, uh, the price for it, et cetera. And I, I know all the arguments on both sides. I just would like to postpone this public hearing until we've had more time to discuss this. Um, I'm obviously all in favor of public hearings as a general principle, but I'm going to vote no on this.
Okay, it's a resolution, so, um, it may pass without unanimous vote. So call the vote, please.
8 yeas adapted.
Thank you. Okay. Would you like me to go through, uh, would someone like to make a motion to move all of the URA properties to the floor so I can do what I normally do with the properties? All right. So we have a motion from Miola. We have a second from Williamson. Any opposed to moving Resolution 1 through 8 excluding 3? Okay, so ordinance 4, do we have a motion for ordinance 4, the sale of 315-317 Court Street to Michael Pezzelenella for $400,000 to place that in committee? We have a motion from McNeil, second from Miola. Any opposed to placing that in committee?
Yes.
Okay, we have one nay on that to go in committee. Thank you. All right. So we're going to go back to Resolution 1, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 124 Thomas Street to Patricio Muello for $30,000 from the URA. That is the public hearing which will be held on September 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Your votes. Or, I'm sorry, uh, we have a motion from Miola, second. Beatrice, your votes.
8 yeas adapted.
Ordinance 2, sale of 124 Thomas Street to Patricio Muello for $30,000 from the URA. We have a motion to place that in committee? We have a motion from Miola, um, McNeil, second from Miola. Any opposed? All right, it's in committee. Resolution 5, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 1125 Summit Place to SoCo2 LLC, Suva Nasust, for $1,500 from the URA. We have a motion from.
Negative.
Moody, second from Williamson. Your votes.
8 yeas adapted.
Thank you. Ordinance 6 is the paired ordinance for the sale of 1125 Summit Place to SoCo2 LLC, Suva Nasust, for $1,500 from the URA. Is there a motion to place that in committee? We have a motion from Miola, second from multiple people. I'm going to go with LaMedico. Any opposed? It's in committee. Resolution 7, calling for a public hearing on the sale of 707, 709, and 319.53-4-39 Mohawk Street and 703, 705, 707, and 711 Blaine Dynasty to Esmer Seremovic for $7,000. That's the public hearing on September 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. We have a motion from DeBrango, second from Williamson. Your votes.
8 yeas adapted.
Thank you. Ordinance 8 is the sale of the same to Esmer Seremovic for $7,000. We have a motion from Miola placing committee, second from LaMedico. Any opposed? It's in committee. Okay, we're done with the package of properties from URA. We're going to move on to the rest of the package that was reviewed in pre-meeting conference, but I'm going to hand the floor back to District 1 for any further comment and/or motions to move.
Um, I just wanted to remind everybody with school starting and buses going around, please just do be careful, you know, where you're parking to make sure that our kids are as safe as possible. And, uh, that is all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. District 3, councilperson Friend.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a similar kind of school concern. You know, with school going back and lots of parents really concerned about the various kind of conditions under which school will work uh, in terms of COVID and all the various precautions that we need to take. A lot of parents turned out for the school board meeting last week. And, um, unfortunately, the school board is their new accommodations in the new administration building. Their boardroom is even smaller than it was before, so they literally could not accommodate the public who wanted to attend. And I would like to encourage the school board to rethink where they're going to hold their board meetings. Um, it is in accordance with open meeting law that the size of a room must accommodate the public who wants to come. And the public wanted to come and the school board room was full. So very problematic. Lots of parents wanted to participate in the decisions being made about their children and were forced to kind of stand around, um, in hallways and in the parking lot, unable to participate in the school board meeting. So, um, I would just like to encourage the school board to rethink where they hold their board meetings in light of state law. That's all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. President Pro Temp and District 4 Councilperson Frank Miola, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'd like to start by moving ordinance number 10.
All right, stop signs. Let's do it.
Yeah, intersection where stop sign required. To be ordained, Section 2-16358, Schedule C. Intersections where stop signs required be amended to include the following. Lead Street and Eagle Street, Northeastern Corner. Lead Street and Eagle Street, Southwestern Corner. Um, I'd just like to add, clerk, this is just a legislative act. Can you please note the legislation that our sign department does not have to take any action on?
Will do.
Don't want to end up with two stop signs.
Yes.
All right. So we have a second? All right, Williamson, your votes.
8 yeas adapted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And the next piece of legislation I'd like to move is ordinance number 13. First off, I'd like to thank the Officer, Deputy Chief Noon and Captain Bazner, Lieutenant Holt, and, uh, I think Patrolman Sil. Did I say his name? C-Liv? C-Live? They were kind enough to canvass the area to make sure the signage was proper for the residents. Um, they assured the residents that this would be in the best benefit for the block. And once again, um, gentlemen, I really appreciate all the hard work that you, uh, did to resolve this issue that we're having on school craft. So I'd like to start with a rescinding and no parking at all times. Section 216360 Schedule C, no parking at all times. On Broadway East Side from intersection, oh, that's not supposed to be in there.
Yeah, I was going to, I was actually just going to ask why we were doing something up here.
That is not supposed to be in there.
Okay.
Okay, let's remove, uh, the first, um, Broadway statement we need to, um.
Well, you're introducing this, so why don't you introduce it and just read it without that in there?
Correct. Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I'd just like to read it into the record correctly.
Oh, hang on one second. Councilman DeBrango, did you have that in there? Hold, hold on. Um, the deputy clerk is mentioning that ordinance 13 has the on Broadway East Side from intersection, et cetera, in there due to your additions. Is that true?
I, that would have to be a separate piece. Okay, that would have to be a separate piece of legislation.
Ah, there we go.
So if Frankie, if you would like to add that legislation when it comes to you, you can read it into the record? Do you, do you want to rescind it or what would you like to do with it?
All right. So here's what we'll do. Um, Councilman DeBrango, when, when it comes to you, okay, so Councilman Miola is going to introduce his piece and read it as it reads with school craft, the school craft pieces, you're going to vote on it, okay? When it comes to you, uh, make a motion to ordain and then read the same thing, except you leave out the school craft stuff and read only the Broadway stuff. And then it will be read into the record appropriately and voted on appropriately and the clerks will make that be reflected in separate pieces. If you'd like to separate it, Judge. No, they, they're going to separate it.
They can make it ordinance number 16, Your Honor.
That's, yeah, that's on the floor already.
Number 16, can you just make?
All right. So that's, Judge, that's, that's what, that's what I just said. I just, yes. No, no, so that, and I, and then I said that they're going to go and, and create it so they can bring it up. Okay. All right. So by the time, by the time it gets to you, it'll be all set.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Alright, so there's a motion, or you're gonna introduce it without it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to move, uh, ordinance number 13. Of course, we're omitting the Broadway, uh, section of it, and we're just only including the Schoolcraft, Schoolcraft Road, both sides between Sherman Center and Garden Road. Uh, School, Schoolcraft Road, both sides, 1600 block. Mr. President, I'd like this rescinded.
Okay, second? Alright, we got a second from Williamson, your votes. Yes, yep. It'll be, well, his'll end up 16 after, cause it's, yeah, exactly.
No, we got enough.
It's, it's okay, she stepped out, it's still, we still have a majority in the room, but thank you, yeah.
Seven yeas adopted.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to move ordinance number 14. No parking during certain hours, I'd like that also rescinded. To be ordained, that's Section 216361, Schedule F, no parking during certain hours. Schoolcraft Road, 1600 to 1604, Monday through Saturday during school session. Schoolcraft Road, West Side, from Garden to Parkway during school session. Mr. President, I'd like this rescinded.
Okay, we have a second? We have a second from Moody. Your votes on ordinance 14.
Eight yeas adopted.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have one more piece. I'd like to move ordinance number 15. No parking at all times. Um, Section 2-16360E, no parking at all times be amended to include the following. Schoolcraft Road, East Side, from Sherman Center to Parkway. Uh, to be ordained, the proper signage to be enacted, of course, to be necessary.
Second? Second from DeBrango. Your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you. Fifth district, Councilman Moody, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I would like to say that I'm gonna, um, we've gotten some concerns about these community gardens and, uh, things, and so I do think that that is an issue that maybe we should look at, um, to make sure that all the community gardens, um, in the city of Utica, to look at what existing verbal commitments might be out there, and, um, kind of work through that, because there were some concerns in my district with two community gardens where there might have been some verbal agreements from previous administrations, but then lots have been sold. One is not in our purview, um, or jurisdiction, but the other one is, and, um, so maybe just pre, uh, proactively looking to see where we might have those around the city. Um, I, I do have another issue that, that, um, really bothers me. This council passed a moratorium on corner stores. And yet and still, in Oneida Square, there is a new corner store that has happened, and the explanation that I'm given is that it is because that corner store has been zoned previously, um, as a corner store, and therefore, the moratorium that we passed does not affect because it is, um, already zoned for that. I don't believe that the moratorium was with regard to zoning, I think it was with regard to stores in general. So, the Corporation Council may wanna respond to that, but I don't understand how there is a new corner store on Oneida Square, and we passed a moratorium. So, that's an issue for me, I don't know if they can respond now, or maybe in writing to the council in a later time, but that's an issue for me.
Who's got it?
Uh, Codes? Corporation Council? I mean, he said you can respond at a later time.
Yeah, it'll just be a little bit easier for me to do that, um, with the legislation in front of me, and it'll be a more detailed response, um, just because it is a few different departments between Codes and zoning as far as working on that, but I'll have something prepared and sent over.
Thank you.
Yeah, but, but, I think this goes back to the issue that we all face. We passed, huh? Yeah, we, we passed legislation, and when it comes down to enforcement, there is a breakdown. We passed legislation about cracking down on these corner stores, yet the same issue that we have on Oneida Square that the gentleman talked about is still going on. I don't know if it's a Codes thing, not to throw Marcus on the bus, he know I love him, but I don't know if it's a Codes thing, an enforcement thing, but we passed legislation cracking down on corner stores, yet they do the same stuff.
We have one on Sunset that, that failed at the level of the ZBA, and the next thing I knew, it was, it was open.
Alright, so, Councilman Moody has the floor.
So...
Um, if, if you would like to address the chair, so I can call upon one of the city officers?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
That's fine.
But I just wanted to address that, because we can't talk about, Mr. President, we can't talk about cleaning up Oneida Square and all of these other things if, when we passed legislation, um, there's not a, a concerted effort with us and the administration or, or department heads to find a way to make what we passed, um, enforceable. And I understand there are loopholes, but one thing I've learned from my short time being here is if you wanna get something done, there's a way to get something done. And I don't care how many loopholes are in the system, if there was, if there was support to not make sure that there was a new corner store in Oneida Square, it would be shut down today. And so I'm tired of passing legislation on this floor, and when we walk up and down Oneida Square, every day I see those corner stores, and what's the point of doing all of this if it's not gonna be enforced? So that's my, that's my beef there. Other than that, Mr. President, um, I am concerned about Oneida Square. We hear things about the county is not helping us, folks from all over, uh, folks from all over, um, um, the county, I'm hearing, are being brought to that area, to, uh, Oneida Square, as if we are New York Skid Row. Multiple counties brought to Oneida Square.
Mm-hmm.
We have to stand up and say we are not going to take that, and I don't understand it, I really don't. All the services are in one area, in Cornhill. All of the issues are, are being brought to that area, right? And so when we talk about, uh, uh, cleaning up Oneida Square, if we don't get support from multiple people, right, we're, we're kinda, um, we're kinda up the creek. But I do wanna get an answer to, um, that corner store, maybe Corporation can't, I'm sorry to hop on it, but maybe Brian Tom, uh, Commissioner...
Well, so let me, let me clarify really quick, this is remonstrances and appeals, um, and you aren't necessarily compelled to answer this right now. Uh, each councilperson sometimes raises things at the council meeting that are complicated to answer and may not have an answer right now. Would you like, uh, Corporation Council's, uh, current answer now, would you be fine with that?
I wanna see, um, Commissioner, uh, Brian Tom.
Yeah, well...
Okay.
Or... Yeah, because I said my name, so I...
Alright, so, no, so, no, so that's fine, so...
You're under the bus.
No, so there's, no, so the, the city officers can respond to this.
Yes, all of them.
If, if the floor is fine with this during remonstrances. Can we have a motion to allow the city officers to speak on behalf of this? That's what I was looking for, thank you.
Sorry.
Alright, we have a second from, uh, McNeil. Any opposed to the city officers responding to, uh, Councilman Moody's discussion regarding the legislation that was passed, uh, passing a moratorium on corner stores? No one's opposed? Okay, you guys have the floor now.
Okay, um, so, we, I just wanna be clear that I, I supported the council passing the moratorium on corner stores. The Codes Department of the City of Utica is enthusiastic to enforce that. It, it's just that, we have to make sure we're doing it within the confines of the law, and, and this is a particular corner store, we've been interacting since it happened, and it comes down to your definition, from my understanding, Corporation Council will give, uh, you know, their, their feelings. It comes down to your definition of new. What we have is a corner store that has been traditionally operating, that transferred ownership. While it transferred ownership temporarily, the guy stopped running the store because he wanted to make some upgrades. But, my understanding was that the city viewed that as a contiguous store, and not two separate stores, so if you own a store now and you sell it to somebody else, they can keep the store running. So, it wasn't a matter of Codes, I just wanted to be clear because Codes was said, and the councilman's fine, I mean, he said he loves me, I think he's okay, but, um, no, that, it's, 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 there is no hard feelings, I understand the frustration, um, might be something that, that Corporation Council can clear up, and you go, but I just wanted to be clear that, on, on, on Codes' end, it's not a reluctance to enforce the law, it's just wanting to enforce it within the law.
Okay, are you all set, Commissioner?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna hand the floor to Corporation Council.
And I'll just add, I mean, I was here when that, when it was passed, um, I know there was a lot of discussion, I know there's a lot of issues, um, I think Marcus hit it, hit the nail on the head as far as what is defined as new, um, and I will say that we in Corporation Council were addressing the issue, we knew that this was gonna be an issue, um, so, there's an issue with what starts as new and what's grandfathered in, and we had come to the legal conclusion that, as Marcus had said, they were a corner store already, it was continuously, even though it changed hands, um, and they had stopped, um, operating or temporarily stopped operating, it was a corner store, um, prior to the moratorium.
But that's not what we said.
No, we're never gonna get rid of them, but do they close and they change? Then when they close, they're done, they should be done with, get them the hell out of here.
Alright, so actually, hold on, hold on, Corporation, Corporation Council has the floor, this is petitions, remonstrances and appeals, this is technically Moody's time, the other council people can add to this. No, it's fine, it's fine, as you were saying.
The only other thing I'll add is I do recall when we had this, when this was brought up, when it was being passed, is we had a question as to whether or not people would be grandfathered in and what stage they'd be in. Um, and I believe, um, I think it was Marima that was here, don't quote me on this, but I believe she had said that if someone had a corner store that wasn't fully complete, whether they were waiting on, um, certificate of, is it occupancy or use, which one is required?
Certificate, certificate of occupancy.
So, whichever one was required, if they were in the process, we could not stop that process. But anybody who came in and said they were seeking something new, we could stop. Um, so that's what my understanding of was that discussion, and that's where this corner store happens to stand. They were already a corner store, they had their zoning, um, uh, were cleared by zoning to have it there, they already had it there, um, it just was a, a break in the...
But if it, but...
Active operation.
We have a committee meeting, because if it was a new owner, do we have any legal jurisdiction to shut it down? That's what I wanna know.
I, I mean, I can do a little bit more, I can do a little research, we at Corporation Council did not feel...
To say that, that, that Corporation Council, not to throw you off, did not act on the definition by which we passed that legislation, we passed it with an understanding. But I'm hearing two separate stories, I'm hearing that, that if, if one corner store had a, had a zoning permit, whatever, and was in the process of renovating, that did not happen before the law, then they would be grandfathered in. But then I'm hearing that it was an owner, switched owners, and then they started renovations. So if they switched owners, then, then they're not grandfathered in.
So the, so it, the zoning stays with the property, it doesn't run to the owner.
But we didn't, well, we didn't pass a law predicated upon zoning, we passed a law predicated upon a new store opening.
But this was, and I think I can help you out here because some of the confusion, right? Because what's a permit? When these things get cleared out, our lawyers interpret them, so, he had already started working on whatever renovations he was doing. He had not sought permits for those renovations. He did ask for, um, a scenic and historic exception to put up his window, right? So that's not us, that's scenic and historic, that's not Codes. So he had taken action as the owner of the property, who bought the property before he had the corner store, the work had already started. So now if I started work before the moratorium, but I didn't go through the proper legal channel, that's a whole different separate, such definition than, well, what if I already filed for the permit? So that's why we had to bring it to legal, and they determined that his action was scenic and historic, showed his intent, and that he had already been doing the work, and he bought it when it was a corner store, with the intent of keeping it a corner store, and it stayed continuously a corner store even while he did the work. So, that was what we heard.
Did he put in the, the certificate that it were a corner store or just to stay in business?
I'm cool.
Um, he doesn't have...
So, hold on a second.
I'm cool, can, can we make a motion to have open discussion if that's what...
Well, that's so, basically what I was just, I was just thinking about a motion that I was gonna ask you to make, actually. So this discussion, you can make a motion to have open discussion if you'd like, cause the majority of the council, the majority of council wishes. However, may I suggest something? We have special counsel, S E L, to the council, okay, Judge Garramone. If you would like that, the, the effectiveness of your legislation reviewed, uh, I would suggest to the council that you make a motion to request that our attorney meet with Corporation Council to discuss that legislation and how it affected this particular situation. Because right now, I can negotiate this, uh, conversation as chair, but in the context of this room tonight, I don't believe we will have any conclusion.
Sure, yes, I, I, yeah, and, and I would like that motion with our intent to keep them corner stores closed. The effectiveness of how to close, uh, have a moratorium, as we suggested...
Okay.
And to, uh, close those corner stores, that corner store in particular.
Could I like to...
Cause it's, as our attorney.
I'd like to add something to this, it seems to me that there's a pattern which goes back to the Sunset Store, which tried to be a convenience store and then...
On the same grounds that I was reining in, Councilman LaMedico, I'm gonna bring this back to Councilman Moody, it's his, uh, time for the floor. The motion to open the discussion to the city department heads is there. If Councilman Moody would like to, uh, make any other motions, uh, as he sees fit, that's fine. Uh, you had a current motion on the floor, do you wanna rephrase that? For the council, so that you could potentially get a second?
You all wanna say something?
No, no, we gotta, we gotta move this on. You gotta have, you gotta have Corporation Council getting involved with this, with the judge.
I wanna know whatever, I wanna know where we are with the Codes.
Alright, so, every single thing that I'm hearing from everyone goes right back to...
A committee meeting.
A motion to have a committee meeting, and also the motion to have Corporation Council and our attorney meet and determine the effectiveness of that, so...
For the record, well, we're still into the current motion, I just wanna add that we did give them three tickets for not seeking a permit for the building they were doing.
Thank you for that addition, Councilman Moody, the floor is yours.
What's the, uh, particular parlance for the wording for the motion?
Just make the motion to request what you'd like, it's, it's yours.
Motion to request our council to review the effectiveness of our moratorium and zoning, moratorium and zoning, um, for corner stores. With Corporation Council.
Okay, is there a second? We have a second from LaMedico. Any opposed to requesting that our attorney meet with Corporation Council over this legislation?
By, I wanna put a timestamp on it, by next meeting.
Okay, so by the September 15th meeting?
Yes.
Okay, is there a, uh, we have a second, any opposed to this? Okay, thank you.
I am, absolutely I am, cause I want that closed.
The floor is yours.
I'm done, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you. Sixth district, Councilman Joe Beatrice, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, I wanna, uh, pull, I wanna do the proposed resolution number nine, authorizing sale of wine and beer to St. Anthony's and St. Agnes Church, whereas the sale of alcoholic beverage and the possession of an open container containing alcohol beverage is prohibited on Utica City streets, sidewalks, playgrounds, parks, and right of ways by the ordinance of common council, except in certain incident, instances where permission is granted by the common council. Now, therefore, be it resolved that permission to sell beer, wine, and the exemption from provision of Section 2-15-43 subdivision C, 1, 2, and 3 regarding open container of alcoholic beverages is granted to, excuse me, St. Anthony's St. Agnes Church. The event is St. Cosmos Damiano Annual Feast. The date of the event is September 25th, 2021, from 5:00 P.M. to 9:00 P.M. The location of the event is St. Anthony's St. Agnes Church, 422 Tilden Ave, Utica, New York, 13501. Be it further resolved that this permit is conditioned upon the premise, defending and identifying and holding a har, and holding harmless the City of Utica, its agents, employees from liability allegedly occurring as a result of the activities authorized herein, and providing liability insurance, naming the City of Utica as the insured, in the amount of not less than $1 million for general liability, and $1 million for liquor liability. A certificate showing such insurance shall be foot, show, insurance, and to be full force and effect shall be filed with the Corporation Council before undertaking the permanent activity.
Alright, we have a second from Miola, your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Eight yeas adopted.
Okay, the, first, first of all, I'd like to take a second to honor our 13 troops that lost their life, lost their lives in Afghanistan and special thank, special, you know, sympathy out to their family. It's a terrible thing and I can't imagine, I know we have some military guys on the council here and I just think it was a terrible thing. Second, I'm going to reiterate what Mr. Vincent said, as far as our city officials, our departments, you guys did a great job on the, the August 13th flood and I thank you. One last thing, well, two last things. The, as far as the homeless and panhandlers, we have a serious problem in North Utica, same thing. So, hopefully we get to work on that. You get off the thruway, the first thing we see is the panhandlers in North Utica. I know I've talked to the judge and I respect everything he tells me, that's why I really haven't pushed the issue anymore, but the homeless problem over there, Deputy Chief Noonan, I'm sure he, he will tell it, our hotels over there, they're, they're doing the same thing, they're putting them there too. Lastly, I will be holding a meeting tomorrow night at the Neighborhood Center at 6:30 regarding the flooding issues. I have, I have some department heads from our city, I have a couple county legislators, and I have people from the Deerfield Highway Department and their council. So, I would like anybody that's out there listening, you're more than welcome to come. It's more of a, it's more of trying to build a team to work together. Our city has done a ton and we've got to try to get some, you know, extra other people to help us out here also. So, thank you very much, that's all I have tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council at large and minority leader, Mark Williamson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I got resolution number 11, approving shared services agreement with the County of Oneida and neighborhood municipalities, whereas for many years, City of Utica has been party to an intermunicipal shared services equipment agreement with the County of Oneida and the neighboring municipalities, and whereas a result of agreement, there have been several incidents of intermunicipal cooperation and shared services to the mutual benefit of the City of Utica and adjacent municipalities. And whereas the agreement has come up for renewal and is in the best interest of the city to continue operations under agreement, therefore, better be it resolved that the City of Utica hereby authorize and approves acceptance to propose intermunicipal agreement for shared services and equipment in substantially the same form as attached herein to, and be it further resolved that the mayor be authorized to execute agreement and any other documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution.
Alright, second, Mewola, your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
Alright, I have resolution number 12, authorize engineering planning grant for a combined sewer overflow and abatement study, whereas the City of Utica was awarded engineering planning grant, EPG, 105501 through 2021, consolidated...
This has been reviewed in full in pre-conference. This has been reviewed in full, so you can summarize this. Make sure you read the, first wherases and then make sure you read the, be it resolved.
Alright. Now, therefore, be it resolved that City of Utica Mayor Robert M. Palmieri's authorized execute grant agreement with the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation and, and any and all other contracts, documents, instruments necessary to bring about the project and to fulfill the city's obligations under engineering plant agreement. Be further resolved that the City of Utica authorized appropriates a minimum 20% local match as required by the engineering planning grant for the City of Utica Combined Sewer Overflow Abatement Study Project under the Engineering Plant Planning Grant Program. This local match must be at least 20% of the grant, award of $50,000. The maximum local share appropriated is subject to any changes agreed to by the mayor and Robert M. Palmieri shall not exceed $10,000 based upon the total estimated maximum project cost of $60,000. Mayor, Mayor Robert M. Palmieri may increase this local match with in-kind services without further approval from the common council.
Second, from Mewola, your votes.
Eight yeas adopted.
And, and, Councilman Moody, you said a statement that other counties are dropping off people and, and to our...
Yes, they are.
That's what's happening? It's like, is that like open boaters but different?
They're buying bus tickets.
I don't know. I mean, there are certain things that, you know, that doesn't belong here, you know what I mean? It's like the school board doesn't belong at the common council, alright? So, that's what I'm trying to get across. There are certain things that belong here and certain things that don't. So, I'll leave it at that, that's all I have.
Okay. Council at large and ENA board member, Jack LaMedico, you have the floor.
Can I add to the floor? A question.
Is the question addressed at the chair?
Sure.
Okay.
Talking about homelessness from a censuous, mind you, and talking about the issues that contribute to that is not germane to the council, to the work of the council.
During, during remonstrances and appeals, the council people reserve the right to express their opinion, that is why it's called remonstrances and appeals. So, if you'd like to speak with the council person after the meeting, it would be greatly appreciated, thank you.
You're right, you're right.
Alright, but thank you. Councilman LaMedico, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just voted again. Anyways...
Lots of voting going on.
On the sad note, as Councilman Beechers did state, prayers to the family of 13 military soldiers, sailors, and Marines that passed away. It was a sad, sad day for America, exactly the way it happened. Being that said, I'd like to bring forth proposing, proposed ordinance number 15.
Out of committee?
Okay, bring it out of committee.
ENA transfer, is that what you're, okay, perfect. There's a motion to remove ordinance 15, transfer of funds, UPD Cost Center reallocations from August 11th. Is there a second? We have a second from Mewola to pull that out of committee. Any opposed to bringing that to the floor out of committee? No one's opposed? If you'd like to summarize...
I would like to move that now? Okay, the transfer of funds of 2020 to 2021 fiscal year per UPD Cost Center reallocations, whereas local law number two of 2007 requires, among other things, that each transfer and appropriations from one account exceeding $15,000 within a budgetary, budgetary year shall be set forth specifically in a, in an accordance and shall not become effective unless said appropriation and transfer is approved by a majority of all council members, whereas the Board of Estimates and Appro, and Apportionment did approve the particular transfer here and after, more particularly described on August 9th...
Thank you.
2021.
Alright.
So, that it, it would, we're going to be now, therefore be ordained that the city controllers hereby authorize and directed to make the following transfers. It would be from uniform, police uniform overtime, police uniform holiday pay, police uniform night differential, police CID salaries totaling $680,983 to police uniform salaries, police CID unused sick pay, police admin physician's fee, police admin salaries, and police admin wages.
Alright, your votes.
Yeah, I got one more.
One more?
Eight yeas adopted.
I'd like to move this next one, proposed ordinance number 16 out of committee, per our last council meeting.
There's a second from Mewola.
Alright.
Okay, any opposed? It's out, alright.
Okay, I'd like to, transfer of funds, 2020, 2021 fiscal year, street lighting, whereas local law number two...
You couldn't just read the from and the to as they're all the same.
Alright, it's from police hospital and medical of 115,642 to street lighting electrical 115,642.
Your votes.
And that's it, thank you.
Okay.
Eight yeas adopted.
Thank you very much. Council at large, Frank Frango, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to agree with the gentleman from South Utica. I understand it is a nuisance with the homeless people standing there begging for money, it's just, I know numerous times, people offer them jobs, but they just don't want to work, they just, they like what they do, I guess, and obviously, they have a, they have a, have an issue there and hopefully, we could work together and, and come up with some sort of solution. It is, it does hurt me every time I see them, every time I drive by, it just, it does, it does annoy me a bit because it just doesn't represent our city, so hopefully we can get them the help they need. With that being said, dated today, proposed ordinance number 16, I'd like to introduce to the floor. It's no parking at all times, rescinded. A second.
Is there a second? Oh, we have a second for multiple people, I'm going to go with Moody. Any opposed to bringing that to the floor?
Okay, ordained at section two dash 16 dash 360, schedule E, no parking at all times on Broadway, east side from the intersection of Hannah Park Drive and Broadway, southbound to 1.73 feet from the same intersection. And the question to be rescinded.
Before we vote on that, is there a motion to waive the Thursday rule? Alright, there's a motion, we have a second from friend. Any opposed to waiving the Thursday rule? Okay, it's on the floor for a vote, your votes.
Okay, I'd like to introduce, pull out a committee and introduce proposed ordinance number 17, transfer of funds 2020 to 2021 fiscal year regarding UFD Cost Center reallocations.
Is there a motion to remove 17 from committee? We have Mewola and LaMedico, or no, I'm sorry. You made the motion, Mewola's got the second. Any opposed to removing this from committee? Okay, it's ordinance 17, it was the UFD Cost Center reallocations from August 9th.
2021.
2021, your votes. Thank you very much.
Eight yeas adopted.
I also like to pull from committee, proposed ordinance number 18, transfer of funds 2020 to 2021 fiscal year regarding UFD retirement, I'd like to move that to the floor.
Alright, Mewola's got the second on that. Anyone opposed? Alright, it's on the floor. Your votes on ordinance 18, from August 9th, 2021.
Eight yeas adopted.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you everyone for attending.
Second.
Alright, meeting's done, thank you. Have a great evening. Judge?